Good evening, everyone. We can call this meeting back to order and thank you all for being here. I recommend that minutes pertaining to collective bargaining NEA Charahoe contract tentative agreement remain sealed until such time as an agreement has been reached. There's been a motion and a second to recommend that the minutes pertaining to collective bargaining NEA Charahoe contract tentative agreement remain sealed until such a time agreement has been reached. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Abstentions? Recusals? Thank you.
I recommend that minutes pertaining to collective bargaining NEA ESP contract negotiation update remain sealed until such time as an agreement has been reached.
There's been a motion and a second that the minutes pertaining to collective bargaining NEA ESP contract negotiation update remain sealed until such time an agreement has been reached. Any discussion? I'll take it to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions or recusals? Thank you.
I recommend that minutes pertaining to potential litigation remain sealed.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Ms. Luzon. There's been a motion and a second that minutes pertaining to potential litigation remain sealed. Any discussion? Take it to both those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions or recusals? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Ms. Juicy, disclosure of executive session votes, please. Executive session minutes of June 22nd administrative assistant contract changes in favor Chambers, Day, LaGore, Luzon, Lyle, MacRusso, McAllister, Juicy abstaining stall. Second vote, executive session minutes of June 22nd NEA Charahoe served by staff contract negotiations abstaining stall. Day and Luzon in favor Chambers, LaGore, Lyle, MacRusso, McAllister stall and Juicy. The next vote is executive session minutes of June 22nd pending litigation abstaining Abbott. Those in favor Chambers, Day, LaGore, Luzon, Lyle, MacRusso, McAllister stall, Juicy. The next vote, another pending litigation from June 22nd abstaining Abbott. In favor Chambers, Day, LaGore, Luzon, Lyle, MacRusso, McAllister stall and Juicy. The next vote, executive session minutes June 22nd homeschool requests abstaining Abbott. In favor Chambers, Day, LaGore, Luzon, Lyle, MacRusso, McAllister stall and Juicy. And finally, to return to open session, all in favor Abbott, Chambers, Day, LaGore, Luzon, Lyle, MacRusso, McAllister stall and Juicy. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Our next items of recognition, please join me congratulating the following students. Postseason awards, high school girl softball Shelby Rude, third team all division. And Ava Rayo honorable mention. High school boys volleyball Matthew Tannen, first team all division. Ethan Cole, third team all division. High school boys lacrosse Josh Peter, first team all division defense. Jay Nilson, second team all division midfield. And Charlie Kraus, second team all division attack. And Ryan Mead, Division Two Coach of the Year voted by the Division Two coaches. Congratulations to all.
We are in the public forum part of our agenda. People who would love to speak on matters that are not on the agenda, please come forward. We are going to try to keep this to 30 minutes total. And we ask that you keep your, if you need, if you want to speak, you keep it to like two minutes. And we're going to, we're going to actually remind you when your two minutes are almost up. Really appreciate it. There's a lot of people here. We want to hear all voices. So, you know, if you want to speak, please keep it concise. We'd really appreciate it. We have a lot to go through today. So.
Could you speak a little louder?
Yes, sir. I'll just, is this better? Okay, sorry. Okay, so did everyone hear that we're going to keep it to 30 minutes, public forum, and everyone's going to have two minutes to speak? Okay, thank you. We have a hand raised out front here. And please come to the podium. Introduce yourself and say, tell your phone, please.
Hi. My name is Cassie Rabbit. I have a son that was in the Charahoe district. Last year, the district refused to honor his medical mask exemption, so we actually pulled him out of the public school and decided on homeschool. So over the past week, I've been in touch with many of the parents of, in the community. And they, you know, have like-minded views. So we started a petition that states, we the undersigned petition to the Charahoe School Committee and school administrators that mask wearing be decided by parents. We wish the children within the public school district regardless of vaccination status be allowed to breathe clean air and not be required to wear a medical device. By allowing vaccinated children to go maskless, maskless and mask those unvaccinated. It will eliminate medical privacy. There is little research to show the effects of mask wearing on children. And the studies just beginning to become available to us do in fact show a negative impact of mask wearing children. Please allow parents to choose to let their children wear a mask or not. So as you were aware, last year was unprecedented and we understand that. And there was a lot of unknown, but now as we begin to see studies coming out, articles are being introduced. And they seem to not be too reassuring. So PubMed.org is a premier resource for biomedical literature. Discusses mask wearing in children, which increases heart rates, respiratory rates and blood pressure. Studies also show that the carbon dioxide levels are more than five times higher than unacceptable levels. So this increases instances of headaches, dizziness and drowsiness. The state or district should not mandate a child to wear a medical device that increases harmful symptoms.
Ma'am, it's two minutes. Sorry.
Oh, so that's okay.
That's coming from you.
So our children deserve to breathe clean air and see smiling faces, especially after these 18 months. So we just hope that you take this into consideration. We have over 230 signatures. So thank you for your time.
No, thank you very much. Okay, sir, I will make sure, but let's get through the people who want, have, want to speak first. Okay, do you have, do you need another two minutes?
No, there are other people who will be in first.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, please. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jim Sullivan. I've been there before. I've been on the school committee before. And I have some concerns I wanted to express tonight. And I'll try to be brief. I have a lot of things I want to say, but I think I will just keep it as an app, small abstract so that you know where I'm coming from. I'm proud of the school. This school system is terrific. And people should know that. I'm proud of the country. It's a great country, great history, and I want people to know that. I know there are difficult decisions to be made now by the school committee. And a couple of involved things, it's systemic racism and they want to also be concerned about systematic racism. So I just want it to be out there how you're feeling about these things. Again, I have a lot of things to say about it, but I guess this won't be the time to say it. But I would like to know what the opinions of the school committee people are and the administration involved with systemic racism and critical race theory. I'd like to know their opinions at this point. And the reason is, I'd like to know what the foundation is and where we're going from here. Because I want it to be positive. Again, this school system is a very good one. Good teachers. A great secretary to the superintendent. And again, it's, I don't want to see the, the students in the school system, elementary through high school be taught different things that may affect their decision-making skills.
Two minutes. Yes. Could you wrap it up, sir? It's two minutes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I want the students in this school system altered to know decision-making skills. And know how to do research so they have the facts in front of them so that they can make rational decisions in the future. So basically, I'll stop there. Say thank you for giving me the time to express myself. And I hope we continue to be a good system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Sean, do we have any people raised hands to? Okay, thank you.
How you doing? My name is Jeremy Palmer. I'm sure a lot of people here recognize me after last meeting that we had here. I just really like to bring to attention to the board and to our community the fact that I feel like a lot of people who are placed in a position of power have forgotten, number one, who have put them there, and number two, what their job to their community is. I feel like a lot of times in a position of power, people forget that they have a bigger responsibility than the community as a whole because it's your job to listen to the community. I feel like what's happened is that we are no longer gathered as a community for our committee to listen to us. But we are gathered here to listen to what our committee is going to tell us is going to happen for us as a community. So I would advise to board members to realize the responsibility that you've been given to represent your community. And in doing that, you would not silence the people in the community by using the power that you've been granted to silence us. We do have a voice and the things that we are saying are loud and clear within a community. But the problem is, the people that we're paying to represent us have chosen to fulfill their own destiny in regards to their employment as well as the dictatorship of what's going to happen with our children. My kids go to this school. I went to this school. I realize that racism plays a part in every community to, as much as the community allows it to play. I was embarrassed as well as disappointed in this board and a lot of the other people that were in this room in the last meeting. Because I was arrested, so it's hard for me not to take it personally when people on this board openly didn't wear a mask and openly socializing their own lives in a manner that is contradictory to what you're telling us that our kids need to do. So as a parent, as a voice for our community, I would openly say that this needs to stop. Our kids do not need to wear masks. They're openly in the community, in sports, involved in family and community without a mask, and now they're gathered into a school where they're telling them that they need to wear a mask. Our families and as a community do not need this. If that's your choice, then that's your choice where your destiny goes as a committee member.
Mr. Palmer, you, can you?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you wrap it up, please?
That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're going to have two people from the virtual join us and then you can be next, ma'am. Christopher Fee? Fee, okay, sorry. Mr. Fee? Ms. Fee, can you hear us? Donna Lisa, can you say something to receive? We have the audio?
Yeah, I don't see anybody in the waiting room, at least in here. I just see Donna and Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Oh, Christopher Fee just entered.
Okay, good. Okay.
Hello?
Hello.
Yeah, am I up? Scott Bill Harris, Hopkinton.
Yes, sir, I have two minutes.
I respectfully request this, the Hopkin and Republican Town Committee Resolution and the resolution from Rhode Island Coalition for Israel Resolution be on a school committee agenda. And I'm disappointed that the school committee chair did not respond to me, my request that they be placed on there. The, number two, I request a discussion of the concern about the critical race theory and anti-racism task force be placed on the agenda so the public can speak to it. I respectfully request that the chief of police of Richmond discuss on any incidences of racism that have existed in the school system to his knowledge. And, and that is it. I, the word is out in the community. There's been no incidences in the town of Richmond according to the chief. I haven't talked to him directly. But that's been said. And I just went to a meeting at the Carolina Fire Station last night, a program put on by the unofficial but Charleston Republicans and was quite in attendance. So that's all I have to say. I respectfully request they be placed on the agenda. And I would respectfully request as a community leader that when I send an email to the chairman of the school committee, I at least get a courtesy reply. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Mr. Fee, is Mr. Fee available? Sean? Okay. Okay, ma'am, you may have the floor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Eda Sazloff. An 18-year resident of beautiful Hope Valley, a retired Charahoe Middle School teacher most recently, but with 44 years total education experience in public education. My gratitude goes out to each of you school committee members who serve in that precarious intersection of the community and professional educators. I want to support your effort to address racism at Charahoe with the establishment of that very thoughtful and open anti-racism task force. I've personally attended most of their meetings just as an interested observer. And I'm encouraged by their recommendations and your positive response to them. Especially the revised graduation party. Change is never easy, but you wrestled with it and you did it. I congratulate you on that. I encourage you to continue to work with the task force on revising the curriculum, which is going to be the most difficult of all tasks. To revise the curriculum as needed, to use evidence to teach the whole story of our history. And to support teachers with the training that they need to help students see events from several different perspectives. And acknowledge that all humans are imperfect, including our founding fathers. And we can still love them anyway. I love America with all of its imperfections and support an education system that teaches age-appropriate truths based on historical evidence. Good luck. You have a big task ahead of you.
Thank you. I see two hands. I'm not sure who is up. Go ahead, sir, you can go. And then we have the two hands in the back. Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Colasanti. I reside in Richmond. Critical race theory. My experience with critical race theory is, it's like analogy of walking into a very dirty restaurant. You look around, it's dirty. You look at the help, they're not very well kept. Now, it's your fault if you sit and you eat there. And it's your fault if you go back again. Critical race theory to me is like going in, walking into a dirty restaurant. My experience back in 1981, when I was going to St. Louis University. The roommate, all right, my parents weren't out the door two minutes, taking my brother to Six Flags. The gentleman was from South Carolina. He walked over to me and he said, I want you to know this right away. I don't like Easterners. That was, I mean, I was shocked. It was like, where's this kid coming from? Now, go ahead, three weeks. My two suite mates were two black guys. I would ask the friendly of the two, would you like to go eat down in the cafeteria? He would repeatedly say no to me. Finally, he said to me, he goes, you know, Mike, let me, let me tell you a story. He goes, last year there was a girl, a black girl, that befriended white girls would go eat in the cafeteria. Her black friends made it so miserable for her, she wouldn't come back this year to school. He goes, I can't be friends with you because you're white. Now, I had a southerner say he didn't like an Easterner. I had a black kid say to me, he couldn't be friends with me because I was white. Did that taint my attitude towards Southerners and black people? Absolutely not. Because you know something? I was brought up in a household that put things in perspective, okay? Today, things are not being put in perspective. Now, when you talk about history, slaves, a thousand years before they boarded those first ships to come to the US, okay? A thousand years of slavery in Africa.
Sir, do you have a, could you wrap up, please? It's two minutes. Thank you.
Slaves of black, black people sold each other into slavery that brought them here to the US. Black people owned slaves themselves. Where do we keep going with this? Why do we have to inundate our kids saying our country isn't the greatest? 350,000 Union soldiers lost their lives to free the slaves. The Emancipation Proclamation was signed by every single Republican under Lincoln. There were Democrats that didn't sign it. They were bribed into signing it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Good evening. Kedrick Swain from Ashaway. Nice to see everybody scowling faces again. Sorry, I didn't get here in time. I did want to object to the minutes before they were closed. I was misquoted last time. I don't know if it's too late to do that, but just throwing that out there. What I was quoted as saying is that there are documented instances of students of racial issues. When what I had actually said was a question of asking, are there documented instances that need to be investigated? So clearly, to clearly ask what problems exist that the anti-racist task force was formed to address. Since last meeting, when we did start discussing critical race theory, the parents were sent the July message from the new superintendent card stating that critical race theory is not in the curriculum nor taught in the classroom. Now, I have to acknowledge that this is a true statement on its face. However, there are policies in development, legislature being written, and other surreptitious avenues where all of this rhetoric is being introduced. With respect to the confirmation of Ms. Picard as Charahoe superintendent and considering her tenure in Providence Public Schools, will the committee recognize that policies developed for other school systems such as Providence or Newport may not be applicable in Charahoe due to our demographics? It seems that there have been many changes in the short amount of time since Mr. Ritchie's passing. Many of which have had pushback from the community questioning whether these changes are merited or necessary. I do have comments about this mental health awareness club that I will address at that point in the agenda, not now. I don't want to spend too much more time on critical race theory except to say that since our last meeting, this semantic debate has seemed to reach a national level. And most of the attention appears to be focused between those who use critical race theory as a catch-all term for anti-racist social equity policies and those who assert that it is strictly and wholly a collegiate thought exercise. But it's the case that both are true at the same time. The theory of critical race theory is based on the assumption that the United States is inherently racist insofar as it functions to create and maintain social, economic and political inequalities between white people and non-white people, especially African Americans.
Mr. Swain, are you going to wrap up?
I am.
Thank you, sir.
As others and I have clearly shown, it's this unproven assertion that is the basis for any of the anti-racism, social equity, whatever the buzzwords that you want to use of the policy changes that we are all opposing. And we oppose these because despite the best intentions, they are basically effectively racial discrimination. So to that point, I'd like to reiterate, the last meeting, it was suggested that the current members of the anti-racist task force not serve on the next phase committee of actual policy creation. So I'd like to also second or encourage that in the spirit of true equity, we have an entirely new group of people take their recommendations and develop policy creation. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. We, just one second, we are getting, we have like five more minutes, so we're going to, you have two, okay. We have two people in the audience and two on, and then we'll close public forum. Okay. Um, I think that's Ms. Hopkins, right? Yeah, she had her hand raised for a while, so we'll let her go first. And then, ma'am, you can go. And then we'll take the two people from.
Hi, Polly Hopkins, Hopkinton, Rhode Island. I'm glad I got to go after Kedrick because there's, some of the stuff I'm about to say directly applies to what he just said. But first of all, I want to reiterate what Scott Billhurst said. And I would like to let you know that the school committee has received resolutions about critical race theory from two organizations. The Hopkinton Republican Town Committee and the Rhode Island Coalition for Israel. Great people. It was brought up at the last school committee meeting, but I would also like to see that on the gen, agenda respectfully, please. Um, a while ago, I was told that the book stamped was in school. I don't, I believe Kedrick just quoted from the book stamped about anti-racism. And I was told, we were all told by you, Mrs. Picard, that it's, critical race theory is not in the school. I think we'd all agree that if you have any information about the book stamped, a lot of us believe it's a very racist book. It holds a lot of the critical race theory tenants within it. So I'm going to read to you an email that I received back from Craig McKenzie, the former principal, who was the principal just recently. And when I asked him about the book stamped being in the lobby in front of his office. Says, hello Polly, thank you for your email. The book stamped is the Read Across America Rhode Island book. Each year, the selected text may be used as part of a course if connected to a curriculum or is a possible book study. The text is selected by the Rhode Island Center for the book. That's a different issue. The Rhode Island Center of the book also provides a guide that aligns to Rhode Island state standards as well as access to authors so that students can meet and discuss a text they have read with authors. There are often opportunities where an alternate text can be selected in a course if it meets the standards required in the curriculum. Our district does have a policy in place where a parent has a concern about materials or curriculum. I'm linking it here for you, for your convenience, sorry. The books were grant funded and are used by some English classes.
Ms. Hopkins, you've got two minutes, so.
Yep. Someone may have sent, seen the text in the lobby as we often have distance learners, students who come in to pick up their materials. So he goes on, but he clearly states that the English classes are using the book stamped. It's not on the approved Rhode Island book list for Charahoe. It is through an NGO organization. It is through an NGO organization that it was picked up. If you look into the Rhode Island Book of the Month Club, all your answers will be there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Stand in public forum for an additional fifteen minutes, as there appears to be many other people that would like to speak.
Sure, if there are. I was actually gonna do that, George, depending on how many people. I'm just trying to keep it within a decent amount of time.
Quite a few people here.
Yeah, I understand. Ma'am, thank you.
Alright, um, wow. Don't quite want to follow this, but, um, I said I wasn't gonna speak, but I had to. And I'm not gonna cry, I promise you. Bringing up Mr. Ritchie. Thank you for whoever brought him up. And I do assure you that this committee in front of you will never forget him, nor what he stood for, and neither should all of us. And so the number one thing I'm seeing here, again, not gonna cry, is a lot of hate and anger towards each other. And that really makes me sad. Okay. A lot of anger, a lot of angerness, and I have my, my own opinion on this.
She has her too.
I do see it. So what I would like to see is for us to all do better. I am on neither side of this view, but I do feel in the middle. I'm not getting information, nor am I getting actual movement and direction. So what I would like to see is us as a community is to come together on both sides to say, "This is what I have a concern with, and this is what I have a concern with." We are all members of the community. One's on one side and one's on the other. I'm in the middle here, but I'm really feeling that we can do better to come together. I don't know the answer to that. Is there a committee we can form with so many on one side, so many on the other? But it can't be the way it's going. I, I am feeling a lot of negativity, a lot of not good vibes from many directions, and it's, it's not this wonderful community that we have and that we all love. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two people on virtual, and then I see some hands raised right in here, so. Jessica Purcell.
Hi, my name is Jess Purcell. I'm from Richmond, Rhode Island. I have two children that I'm raising in our school district, and I'm here to voice my support for our teachers, our school staff, our superintendent, our school committee, and for our children. I've seen my child begin to master reading, writing, math, under the guidance of dedicated teachers in this district. I'm confident that he will develop critical thinking skills, imagination, and empathy towards others as he continues his education. My job as a parent is to be ready to learn alongside him, to understand that he's living in a different world than the one I was raised in. And that, as Robin mentioned, that we can work together to understand how this present moment is related to our complicated history. I do have to come out and disagree with the anti-CRT outcry. In my opinion, it's a power play initiated at a national level by those that felt threatened and weakened by the Black Lives Matter movements. This sentiment was brought home to our community by those who felt threatened by the formation of the Charahoe Anti-Racism Task Force. This follows the same historical patterns that we've seen with outrage over school integration, opposition to the civil rights movements, and the current nationwide legislation attempting to suppress voting access. I stand with all those that favor positive progress over the repetition of past mistakes. We must do better. We have to be open to change, and we can move forward to ensure a bright future for as many children as possible. I'd like to thank the school committee for providing me this platform to speak, and to the Anti-Racism Task Force, whose work ensures that this platform is made accessible to all regardless of ability, gender, culture, religion, or race. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean. Lechowicz, Ms. Jekowicz.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Perfect, thank you. I'm Paula Jekowicz, I am from Ashway. What do the police department, the public library, and social security have in common? Well, they can all be considered socialist in nature. Does that mean that they are socialist? Does it mean that we, our town should do away with them? Of course not. So when I hear that teaching history from a balanced perspective and using best practices is being lumped in with and described as critical race theory, which, as we've talked about, is a forty-year-old theory used in legal academia. It's the same as saying that we should ban our local libraries from being socialist. Just because two things or two ideas have overlap doesn't mean that they're the same. History is the story of the past, and everyone knows there's more than one side to a story. You can't teach history from only one perspective and expect to raise children who are empathetic, much less children who embrace one another's differences. Because, make no mistake, and there is data to back this up, children see differences whether we talk about them or not. We can pretend they don't exist, or we can acknowledge, understand, and celebrate our differences. The word "history" comes from the Greek "historia", meaning inquiry or knowledge from inquiry. Let's change the fear in our community to curiosity. Why aren't we asking, "Well, what are the other perspectives?", or even, "Well, what was your experience?" What I heard a lot of during the last meeting was a lot of fear and the idea of keeping the Charahoe community the same. But that experience isn't always a positive one for kids or families who are considered on some level other, whether it's due to the color of their skin, their gender identity, which is completely unrelated to sexual identity, which is very misunderstood in the last meeting, their neurodiversity, their religious affiliation or lack thereof. We talk about empathy and wanting to speak to the community. But let's make sure we are speaking on behalf of all the community and not just the majority. Because there are a lot of different viewpoints, and we need to be respectful, and we need to kind of teach a balanced perspective to give our kids the best education and not let fear of CRT prevent our kids from getting the best education. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So I would appreciate, I know there's some hands raised, as we have this, yes, ma'am, you can, and then the gentleman in the back. And the sir, yep, thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Betsy Conway. About twenty years ago, I was on the school committee here at Charahoe, and I discovered some very unhappy thing that despite the best efforts of people on the local school committee, the things that were happening were being promulgated on the national and the state level. And it became very difficult to fight on the local level when you had all of the government with the federal and the state breathing down your throat, asking you to bring things into the curriculum, including teacher training. I always carry the Declaration of Independence around because I think it's important for us to remember that this nation had to fight a great war for freedom. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. There can be no peace if it's not just. We would love to have peace and harmony, but if things are unrested, if people are confused, there has to be light. When the light shines on it, things rise that we might not like to see. I am very concerned for the well-being of the children in this Charahoe committee or community. If they're confused about whether they should be feeling guilty about whether they're white, what happens with the suicide? I know that we have a very low suicide rate in this community. Let's try to keep it that way by having kids to be valued not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character, and let's develop that. I would love for any kind of racial injustice to be addressed, of course, but not in the critical race theory, which holds that because you're white, you're inherently a racist person. That's not true. What are we afraid of? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, and then the gentleman in the blue shirt.
Joe Radish, I'm Richmond. I'm a former town council president and sort of the community, just as each of you have done. I'm gonna start with a quote from Dr. Aaron Beck. That quote is, "By correcting erroneous beliefs, we can lower excessive reactions." We have an opportunity in this community, and I've always described as a council president. When I got on council, it didn't matter if I was a Democrat, Independent, Republican, or Tea Party. Our responsibility, each of us, is to respect each other, but we have to educate about everyone in our community. We have to hold every single person in this community at the same level and the same standard. We should not be afraid of the history that we have as a country, but we have to learn it and understand it and respect it. They say if we ignore history, history will repeat itself. And that isn't something important to think. The Charahoe School Committee, I have substitute taught here. We have excellent students. Why? Because Charahoe has tried to provide our students with an open communication. I come from a community in California from one of the first integrated schools. And the opportunity I had is to see all the different values of the different pieces of our community and all of our different races, backgrounds, and so on. So you should not be afraid to learn about who we are as a country, because all that history makes a difference. There's no such thing in my mind as CRT. What's in my mind right now is that we need to learn and be open to understand our history. We have to teach the young people in this community that when they get out of Charahoe, because they are not gonna be in this Petri dish the rest of their life, they have to be able to learn to communicate with everybody. So I encourage all of the people here, I understand your feelings, but open yourself up to be willing to learn and let the school district do what they do and respect them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Curtis Radek, I reside in Wood River Junction. I've got three kids in the system, I've got another one coming up. And I just think for the time, I just want to first off, thank you for the teachers that, that, that just pour themselves into our kids. And our kids need to be taught work ethics, and they need to be taught to treat others with, with the respect that they desire to have returned to them. It's, I mean, the Second Great Commandment, it's, it's the golden rule that we call it. And, uh, you know, I'm thankful for our country, brother. Something you're talking about, the, the men and women that have fought for us and given us the freedoms we have. But CRT should not be taught in our schools. It does not unify, but it divides, and critical race theory feeds on hate and it seeks revenge. No person, man, woman, boy, girl, should be judged on the melanin in their skin, the tone, the color of their skin, but we should be judged on characteristics, on virtues, on, on choices that make us. When, uh, when I was looking to buy a house, I wanted to buy a house in the Charahoe School District, not only because I love Charahoe, I went to school here, but I wanted my kids to have that, that, that quality education. I mean, Charahoe is in, is in the top of the state, you know, when it comes to schools, and that's something that we should be proud of. But the education that I received in my years is not the same education that's being taught today. The theories that are being taught today teaches that they ought not to be taught in the schools, but they ought to be taught in home, what, what they're trying to teach our kids. These theories, you, you are not part of my marriage, and, and, and we're not co-parents in this together. There are things that need to be taught in school and there are things that need to be taught in the homes. When, when new material is introduced and it's given the front seat of the car, well, the stuff that's put in the backseat, it's in the backseat. It's, it's no longer in the front, it's in the back. And so we have, we have less math that would be being taught, less science, less, less education, less English, all these things. I just, I desire that if we could please just get back to the basics in educating our children and prepare in them not a foundation built upon the sands of theory that the state and the government and the, and the country is trying to push down on us, but it would be upon work, which builds character, and treating others in the way that they would want to be treated. If, if that was taught in our homes and it was reinforced in the schools, we wouldn't be standing here having this meeting. If we would just treat others the way that we would desire to be treated, it would take care of itself. There's such great wisdom in that.
Mr. Radek, you, are you almost wrapping up?
I am almost done, ma'am, thank you again. I ask you again that C, CT, critical theory, critical race theory, not be a part of their preparation and their future. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Radek. Time for one more comment. Ma'am, in the back.
Whether we want to admit it or not, critical race theory indicts every white person as a participant.
Ma'am, excuse me, I don't want to take, you'll have your two minutes, but what's your name, please?
Catherine Calasanti.
Okay, and you're from?
Richmond.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
No, that's okay, sorry.
Critical race theory indicts every white person as a participant in an imaginary system of white supremacy, allegedly oppressing every person of color. In this twisted perspective, any deviation from the political perspective of the left is deemed racist. The theory is divisive. I was happy to see when Mrs. Picard provided some parents with this last night, Charahoe's political activities policy. One of the lines said that it was to be politically balanced. And that is exactly what we want. We want political balance. Critical race theory is not politically balanced. It demonizes white people. It is gonna foment hatred. It is gonna raise prejudice. It is gonna do the antithesis of what it is, it is said to do. And the people that are here are angry, not because they're hateful, although I do respect this lady's heart. I, I agree with her heart, and I can understand that she's perceiving it as hatred. It is not. It's, it is outrage because we love our community. And what we see is something purported to be one thing, but it's something entirely different and very dangerous.
Thank you. We're gonna close public forum. Thank you all for speaking. Thank you all for being respectful as each other was speaking, we really appreciate that. Thank you for your comments. Next item is the Mental Health Awareness Club. We have Emma Eldrick and Andrea Spaz, two, well, Emma is gonna present her proposal. Sean and Emma and Andrea, raise their hands. So Emma is a student at Charahoe High School and is looking to begin a mental health awareness club. And I ask the committee to listen to her presentation, and I will recommend approval of her mental health awareness club.
Okay, hello, everyone, thank you for allowing Emma and I to be here tonight. I have Emma Eldrick in here with me. Very proud to say she will be entering 12th grade next year. Emma came to me this past April proposing a mental health awareness club that she and some of her fellow peers felt very strongly impassioned about. And she will be presenting to you her proposal this evening regarding her mental health awareness club. I'm gonna share my screen so that she can share with you her presentation this evening. Okay, Emma, the floor is all yours.
Hi, my name's Emma Eldrick, and today I'm sharing my mental health awareness club proposal. So I'm gonna open up with a quote, and it says, "According to the US Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children and adolescents experience a mental health problem during their school years." So I'd like you just to think about that for a little bit and realize that there are more children suffering with their mental health and having issues than most actually realize. And that quote came from the National Association of School Psychologists. So moving on, why have a mental health awareness club here at Charahoe High School? Well, the whole reason would be to promote awareness around mental health and encourage others to advocate for de-stigmatizing mental health as well. We want to provide a safe, safe place for students who want more information on how to take care of their own mental health, as well be a part of a community based on acceptance and empowerment. We want to expose students and staff to the importance of mental health and provide students with resources if they want to get outside help. We want to expose students and staff to the importance of mental health and provide students with resources if they want to get outside help. So is there interest in this club? Currently, there are at least seventeen students who have committed to join the club if offered at Charahoe High School. There are three adult advisors ready to supervise this club, which include Ms. LaForte, who is a school social worker, and Dr. Oh, who is a school psychologist, as well as building administrators are in support and have been consulted regarding club expectations. Is there a vetted program? So I've done some research and I found a program called Brain Change to Mind. So it's an organization devoted to ending the stigma around mental health and promoting education regarding mental health. And I'll talk more about it in the presentation. So what is our ultimate goal? Our ultimate goal is to start a chapter under the Brain Change to Mind organization, which which will provide the school with a club that will promote both awareness and education about mental health, while also speaking out against the stigma that is cast around mental health. Additionally, this group may offer a place for students to talk about general issues related to mental health, as well as share resources and ideas. So what will this organization provide? We will obtain an annual $500 grant for group activities, education and promotional materials, access to the club portal, which contains event and activity breakdowns, educational presentations and a club guidebook, invitations as well to upcoming events in our area and invitation to the annual Brain Change to Mind Student Summit. So how will this work? So Brain Change to Mind is currently working involving around three hundred and twenty schools across the country. So they will provide us with activities and educational guidelines to follow. And this chapter will be student-led, but at least one advisor will always be present at each meeting to make sure a safe and comfortable environment is maintained. Ms. LaForte would be present at meetings in which more in-depth conversations are discussed. However, participants don't have to get involved if they don't want to. So teachers would also be able to join the meeting so they can become informed regarding the mental health issues, both in society as well as within the community. At the first meeting, norms will be established and created by the students. Boundaries and requirements will be set about what is to be discussed and what is not to be discussed. Working with Ms. LaForte and adult facilitators, we will also be able to monitor topics and monitor the student comfort level as well. Because we don't, we want to make sure nobody's uncomfortable. We plan to work alongside with the Charahoe Youth Task Force on some topics. And I've already talked to them and they're 100% willing to work with us. And as an important reminder, it is not taking place of a mental health support service. So how will we structure our club meetings? We're going to share successes and challenges related to mental and emotional health, brainstorm ideas for making time for and incorporating good mental health practices throughout our busy weeks, participate in activities that promote good mental and emotional health. And these include playing games, talking about and participating in hobbies, working on ideas that can promote mental and emotional health awareness in our community. So the resources is the list. So the Brain Change to Mind, that is their website. And then I have the National Association of School Psychologists where I got the quote from, the program research and the program overview, which is included in this presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Emma. Very well done.
We need a motion. Yes, we need a motion.
I recommended approval of the mental health.
So what we'll do is make a motion and then we'll discuss, yeah.
So you just recommended it?
Yes.
So move.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the mental health awareness club. Now we can open up the discussion. Okay, Mr. Day and then Mr. Stahl. Then we'll go to the.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I've been involved for over fifty years in emergency services. I've been involved over the last fifty years in mental health through my emergency services. I think this is something that is very short in coming to this community. It's been a very significant uptick in self-harm during the pandemic. I took a course here a few years ago in mental health first aid. It was very enlightening. The club is, maybe it'll leave some of the concerns that maybe the individuals would have. The club would be after-school hours, as my understanding would be. Would not be taught in the classroom, but we had a Dr. Harrington presented a program on mental health. Unfortunately, and I I mean this from the bottom of my heart, only twenty-two of our faculty in this school district chose to attend his program in in mental health. So hopefully this would be another way that we could get some of our faculty and staff and leaders of this school district to to take this in a more meaningful manner. So I support it 100%. And I think it's a long time coming.
Thank you, Mr. Day, Mr. Stahl, and then we have two school committee members who will be next. Mr. Mr. Stahl, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. So I appreciate Emma bringing this to our attention. And I appreciate everything that Emma presented and shared, all of her words. I agree with in terms of the need and the issues and providing a place to meet with them. Where this went bad for me or went south for me was with the organizational affiliation. So the the organization Bring Change to Mind is a national organization and they're looking to start a local chapter of that organization here. So I wanted to be very clear that if if the students want to form a mental health awareness club and talk about suicide prevention and talk about mental health issues and create a space and an environment for that to be supportive and encouraging as students, that I would fully support that. But with an affiliation as a chapter of Bring Change to Mind, I adamantly oppose and will vote no. I would encourage you, if you are on the school committee and haven't clicked on their website, the link that was provided in the presentation, to go and read through it. Because unfortunately, I I hear Mr. Day and I completely agree with everything you just said, that this is long overdue and that it's much needed. Unfortunately, for me, a great cause and a great need like that sometimes gets hijacked by an agenda. And Bring Change to Mind, when I went to their website, I was immediately the front page of their website, who we are and what we're about. Immediately was racial racially divisive language, white supremacy, white privilege, racism, white power, murder of of black people by white police officers. I said, well, what are they writing about? They have a blog. So I clicked on the blog page and the first blog is, are you a boy or a girl? And it's a, it's a very, read the blog. I I spend hours on this stuff so that I'm really prepared to talk about this at the meeting. I have a lot of other work to do today that I didn't get done. Read the blog and the blog is an aggressive pushing of gender issues. Many of these things are the things that you're hearing the community come out and say, we don't think this should be the conversation in the school. And you're hearing me say that over and over again. So I think, I wish that that when a student like Emma brings something like this, that she could, would be directed by our administrators or our faculty toward a place that does what she wants to accomplish for mental health awareness, but without the other add-ons or without allowing it to be hijacked for what I regard as political causes. And the connection with the Charahoe Youth Task Force, I have exactly the same concerns about for reasons that we've already talked about. So if those of organization affiliations were removed, I would absolutely be very supportive of this. With those organizational affiliations and with this being a local chapter of that group, I am adamantly opposed and will vote no for that.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Lisa MacRusso?
Hi, Emma. I want to congratulate you on presenting not only your idea, but presenting this evening in this context with this audience. I I think that we should all acknowledge that as a a growing student, to keep your composure and to maintain you know, such a such a smooth presentation with so many people present, regardless of the topic, just having more people present than normal. Um, you did a very, very good job. And I can see why you're a leader. And I can see why you already have seventeen people interested if if you're the one that's having the conversation with them. So speaking of conversation, when I viewed the website and I just did a double check following Mr. Stahl to ensure that I was up to date, the the homepage I saw was full of of resources. And and one of the things that I think um, is really critical for the school community to to consider when forming a new group is it it does sometimes help to have a structure and a model to be able to adopt or adapt, especially for a student group, right? To be able to have some place to start that has some parameters, some guidance, some research, and that you're not just sitting down to talk about bipolar disorder with with no, no structure around that, right? And bipolar is one of the, one of the mental health disorders that is on this website. So I I understand why you need this now and maybe not always, but for a first-year group having something that's structured. I'm sure you've done your research with Ms. Spaz. This is the one you selected. So this is the one I will support with you. Okay, you'll certainly have my vote. My concern, and I'd like you to address it for me, Emma, is when you're having a group after school and you're having these conversations, I'm sure you understand the concept of being triggered, that students could come to this space hopeful and optimistic that they're going to have a conversation. And again, this website has wonderful conversation starters, I I really great tools, very interactive. Um, I I like the little spinner that is on like that. That was really neat. I can see how useful that would be. That spinner was pretty cool. Okay, but they could come in that space and then have a conversation, right, that then triggers possibly concerns with a mental health disorder they may possess themselves. Now, you said that a teacher would be in the space. What I'd like to hear a little bit more about is um, how students will be supported if somebody needs to maybe leave that space after school, right? How many other staff would be there to support them? If someone, if there's an advisor that leaves with a student who needs to process some of the conversation, who's left with the group? Because the conversation will still go on. And then what type of follow-up might happen if a student sits quietly and get right, has it has a moment, a meaningful moment at ten o'clock at night? And they realize, right, that a conversation they had is starting to overwhelm them. Will there be a resource provided, whether it's a national hotline or a connection with the family or an advisor? I want to hear more about that. Um, and and with the idea, so I want you to present confidently, that I want this to work and I want it to go forward. I just wanted to be safe.
So um, we said at least one advisor. So there obviously hopefully will be more. If there is one advisor present, that advisor, if they would have to, would leave with the student if that came about. And if need be, we can stop the conversation and that can be it for the day, if it has to be. Or if the other advisor is present, then we continue it and refocus the group, re kind of configure how everyone's feeling. Um, addressing the going home. So every meeting, we're going to have resources upon resources available for people, national, national resource, local resources, as many resources as possible, so that people do know if they are feeling anyway, at any time, there is something for them that they can contact. So if that is the case, and we'll make sure that they have the resources they need. So if they do want to talk to someone, they can.
Thank you. Those are, those are very good answers. I appreciate that.
I just wanted to add on because it's relevant to what you just said, Lisa. Is that something that Emma and I spoke about was the fact that we need to make sure that the the meeting after school is a safe place for all and that it is not in place of mental health support. It's not a time for mental health support, but rather a discussion around mental health and awareness. Um, and it's really going to be targeted towards that area because that type of setting for direct mental health work would not be appropriate. But we did purposely make sure that we had mental health clinical providers connected to this work, those who are experienced and trained in this area was very important to Emma and myself. And regarding that first piece that you said about Emma doing her research, you're exactly right. She wanted to see if there were vetted resources out there. So when Emma presented the Bring Change to Mind to me, she said, this is a national organization that offers money to schools to help get clubs like this going and to raise awareness around mental health. So she had done her her back work, like you said, and had done some research to see if there was something out there that she could pull some resources from and utilize to support this work.
Chair, quick follow-up, please?
Yes, Lisa, please quickly, because we have more people. Yes.
Sure. Um, so so Ms. Spaz, so thank you for that, right? And and so that and it helped to for you to reiterate that it's not a support group, but an awareness and a conversational group. That's really, I think, a point that actually I missed as well. So thank you for reiterating that. Um, and and to, I I think it actually dovetails and blends nicely with Mr. Day's training in mental health first aid, which is similar, right, which is not about how to diagnose yourself or others, but how to recognize, right, and support a mental health literacy. So, um, well done and thank you both. I'm done, Chair. Thank you.
Ms. Chambers, you have the floor?
Yes, hi. Good evening. I am in total support of this. I thought it was a great idea. I think it's relevant to what our kids are going through, what the conversations are with our kids. And Emma, you did a beautiful job in presenting this and thank you. I too looked at the website and I probably, I didn't get into the blogs or anything like that, but I was very impressed with the website and the content and the 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 depth of the content. And one of the things that in Emma, in putting this together, I realized that you probably might want to add the fact that this will make students aware of the possibilities of going into career fields of mental health. This is an extremely important area that needs to be explored. Or as was said, or maybe not having their own issues with mental health, but seeing it in others and and expressing an interest in it. I have a couple of grandchildren that are looking at pursuing the kinds of things that this website or this group or this club would provide in terms of long-term study, studies and possibly career paths. Oh, I think that's a, yeah, sorry, the phone's ringing. But I think that's an area that also would be, would be benefited by this type of club is making our students aware that these disorders exist. They might not have the 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 symptoms themselves. They might see it in other family members, but also what can be done about it and what kind of support and professionalism there is out there for that and possibly spike an interest in their own pursuit of that as a career. Anyway, I I am absolutely for it. Thank you.
Ms. Chambers? Some hands, Mr. Okay, but I I believe the lady, you had, ma'am, yes, you had your hand up first. Thank you. And we'll get every, we'll get everybody too. Thank you, Sean. We have two also on the.
My name is Phyllis Penhoe. I'm from Charlestown. I have two points and one question for Andrea Spaz. So Emma, great idea, especially if you see a need. I think all of us think it's a great thing in our society to have this. Again, I have a question with Bring Change to Mind. I know some of you quickly looked at the website. I looked deeper into it. The three main points I saw, the first kind of tenant or goal they have is race and mental health resources. The second one is they want to have special guests that students can have access to, that I assume you'll use the resources and let kids watch them. The special guests mainly talk about youth and racial injustice. And then the third thing was how to protect your mental health well-being, which is, I think, what what you really want it to be. So I have no problem with that third one. Also, I just quickly looked at the blog, go onto the the club portal. And the first article I read was about, are you a boy and girl? I'm going to read you the first two sentences. Gender is a complicated journey for some. A lot of people are completely comfortable in their gender. They were the gender they were at birth, while others know that they're in fact the opposite gender of what they were born with. So that was the first one that I saw. So I don't see a lot of where, you know, those mental health resources are going to be, other things are going to be in there too. Then the second, I talked, the other word I saw was enlightened future. I found that three times in three different resources. Okay, the second point I want to make is that the people behind this what this organization called Bring Change to Mind, Demi Lovato, Anderson Cooper, Glenn Close, Glenn Close's sister. Now, do we really, these are the people that I think we can do better than these are the core people that we have to be, the group that we have behind. These are the people, the ambassadors of the group that we have. There's a group called Radical Hope that's backing up this group, the Trevor Project, mindfulness, Jed, Jed Project, the Weave Group, the Steve Fund. The Trevor Project, Mindfulness, Jed, um, Jed Project, the Weave Group, the Steve Fund. So if you look further, you'll see that there's other things there. We're not against mental health for students. It's a great thing, but it's other things coming through. Um, I, my turn, alternative is, oh, how about our Charahoe resources? How about the people of Charahoe, help the children of Charahoe? I believe there's intelligent people here that could help and be part of this group. Now, I know you're going to get $500 from this group, but I don't, I don't think we should sell out just because of the money. Um, and then Mrs. Spas, the question I have for you is last night you were at a meeting and you heard parents telling you that there's semantics here. You're telling us it's one word, but when we dig further, there's other things. So either you didn't hear us, you didn't look into this group, you don't care. I just like to know, did you look at this organization?
So to address your question, I, what I'm presenting to you tonight is a proposal that was brought forward to us from Emma. She was very prepared in outlining with you this evening her, her main goals of this work. I think we're definitely open to having discussion about the best resources to use to support her, her work and her, um, her main focus is mental health awareness. And like she had shared, she has uh, students who are interested in this uh, club as well as adult advisors. And I think we are open to hearing and taking a close look at the best resources to support this work. Uh, like I said, um, I'm sharing with you, um, something that a student is very passionate about and are students back in support. And I um, think that Emma and I can definitely sit down and have more deep conversation about resources to best support this work. Um, but again, that main premise being mental health awareness, that is the main purpose of this club is the mental health.
Thank you, Andrea. And maybe in the future, you, um, if you're mentoring a student, you could um, better uh, vent some of the resources that they're going to present. Thank you.
There's, do we have any more school committee members that want to speak before we go to them? Okay, Mr. Legori.
Yeah. Emma, thanks for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Bring the thing closer.
Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. I appreciate it and I certainly support the need for mental health awareness. At the same time, the B C two M, I forgot the name, Bring Change to Mind. Uh, my concerns are different than some of the others that are raised. But I, I think one of them was your interest in the $500. And I'm, I'm wondering if, is the, is the success of this club dependent on that money? And or what did you have in mind for the money? And, and I don't necessarily need an answer now. I'm just gonna make a few comments. Um, some of the things I heard here today, I completely agree with the need. I think uh, Mr. Day mentioned a few great things, including mental health first aid training, which ironically is our last speaker mentioned, community resources. That's uh, run through the University of Rhode Island, but more importantly, it's uh, led by someone who has a family in our own school district. So that's a resource that might really be worth tapping into. But I think ultimately, if our, if this organization is dependent on an outside club, and especially if it's dependent on the financial um, incentive to that club, I'm not sure that's the right direction. So while, while I completely agree we need this, I want to side with Councilman Stahl that uh, I'm, I'm completely in favor, but I'd like to maybe reconsider who, who the organization aligns with. Thank you.
Mr. Day, yeah, Mr. Day and then Mr. Stahl.
Yes, uh, Gary, I think you got the right idea here. I, I, I would suggest that uh, we table this or defeat it and, and give them the uh, edict to go back and work with somebody like Dr. Harrington and, and other associates in Charahoe and come up with our own, with our own program. Uh, we have a SAF Students Activity Fund here that probably can come up with a, a few dollars through their, uh, through their uh, vast uh, treasury to uh, support anything that might be needed for this club to get going with printing or whatever. We do have, we have a, a graphics department over here at the, at the school. There's a lot of ways that we can do this in-house and, and uh, I think that uh, we need to uh, to table this or defeat it and, and have, encourage them to come back with, with, with our own homegrown version of this because it is needed and, and I don't want it to, to fail because of uh, of the affiliations that it's questionable.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Um, Mr. Stahl and then Mr. Luzon.
Uh, in full agreement with uh, Mr. Legori and Mr. Day, I think we're on the right track here.
I agree.
And I'll be happy with that to vote no on this tonight and ask Emma uh, to come back and, and look at a different, a different program, different organizational affiliations and come back and bring something along these lines. And I'll be very supportive of that when it comes back. I want to say that, that some of the things that, that Lisa mentioned uh, and that Mrs. Spas mentioned, the dangers of counseling without qualified professionals is not being a support group. You know, if we don't understand that, how do you expect students of this age to understand that? That this isn't a mental health service or provider? So that's something you need to be very, very careful about for their health and safety and benefit as well as for liability. We, we need qualified professionals in there and having counselors and supports. We do already have in the district. We spend a lot of money and a lot of resources on counselors and social workers and people that have the referrals in the program. So let's not duplicate those or usurp those or miss those. Um, I think we do too much of it, but we have those people and here we are not tapping into that and using them. The last thing I want to say for people that, that, because I don't want to say something like, look on the website and then you say, I look on the website and see something different. Look at the About Us page. That's where you will find the paragraphs that I'm talking about. Then go to the Read and go to the Blogs and that's where you will find the blogs that we're talking about. And if you still have questions, I will send you screenshots so that you, you know that I'm not saying something that isn't there. Um, the last thing I want to say about that, and I'm, I'm gonna say it as respectfully as I can in this, in this setting and in this context. This is, this is not about Emma or the club. This is about when these things come to this committee. If I didn't read through this website and if I didn't bring this up and if we didn't have this conversation here, it would have been passed without anyone having a sense of it. And the people that we ask to make sure that's not happening are our administrators and that needs to be better.
Just real quick, I, I hope I'm not out of protocol. We've talked about either table or voting no. My preference would be not to vote no because I want to support Emma and I don't want it to seem like we defeat this. I want to give her a chance.
Yeah, so you can, you can move.
I would move that we table this.
No.
So.
Okay, we made a vote.
Madam Chair, I rescind my motion.
Okay.
So Madam Chair, I make a motion to table this.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that, to table this item? No? Those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emma.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the GZA Middle School Oil School.
Correct. So we'll have a, we'll have an opportunity to discuss it when we bring it back to the table. Thank you, sir.
The next item on the agenda is the GZA Middle School Oil School Status Report. This item was requested by Mr. Day and the GZA representatives, both John Spirito and Albert Florrie will provide an update. And they should raise their hands so Sean can recognize this.
You're on, you're gonna be.
Um, Albert Florrie and John.
He's on.
Spirito. Okay. He just raised his hand. Thank you.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you. I hope I do as well as Emma. That was a very impressive young person. Thank you, uh, school committee for, and all that are listening for inviting us, giving us a chance to give you an update on the fuel oil, number six fuel bio remediation project that we've been working on. That's uh, myself, Al Florrie and others at GZA for the last 11 years. Prior to our involvement, another consultant worked on a pump and treat remediation for 10 years. And I'm gonna try to be brief and to the point, I'm just uh, go over briefly where we are in the status of the work. Um, and, and we had an attempt to reach closure with DEM. I'll talk about that. And for those of you who are not familiar with the remediation, I'll just give a brief look at where the release is of fuel oil under the middle school. Um, the base, very brief look at the remedial system. And then information on what we've accomplished in terms of removing, removing the fuel oil and where we think we will be shortly in terms of trying to get to closure. I'm sorry for this very busy slide, but um, basically, we wanted to highlight, first of all, that a decision was made 10 years ago by the school committee to switch from pump and treat system to bio venting. And uh, that has resulted in, I will explain later how we came up with this.
John, we just see your, your files. We don't see your presentation. Some of us have it, but for the audience.
Oh, well, how do I, how do I share it with the audience?
If you, um, just make sure if you have a, a double desktop that maybe you're using that, just make sure the screen that you, you're sharing is the correct um, screen.
Uh, it says I'm screen sharing. Oh, good lord. Um.
You shared your folder, not the presentation. So open the presentation and then share the folder.
Open the presentation and share the folder.
So stop sharing.
Stop sharing? Okay.
Yeah, stop sharing and then.
And then when you share the application, share your presentation for the entire desktop.
Right, uh, so go back to share and where do I find the presentation? Will it be obvious?
Just to share desktop.
And I'll, can you do this? Not sure. Sorry, everybody. Al, are you on? Can you share?
John, I'm gonna have Ned here, share his screen so that you can talk off Ned's screen. Thank you.
Ned, make sure you stay muted.
Thank you. Go on slide. Um, John, you're on.
Okay.
Two or three?
Two. Thank you, Al, for rescuing me. Uh, so I'd go to the next slide.
Yes.
I, can I do that? All right, well, I'll, I'll talk and eventually we'll get to that screen.
Um. Just scroll.
Or should I wait? So what you would be seeing when we get to the next slide is in um, with the change in remedial approach, about $600,000 was saved by the school committee. Uh, thank you, Ned. And the change in remedial strategy increased the fuel removal rate from uh, 200 gallons per year. That was what was reported by the predecessor consulting firm to 3,000 gallons per year. And it provided control of vapor intrusion under the building, which the other remedy didn't. Now, I'm sure what really the committee wants to hear is when will we be done? We've been before you before and explained, there's a lot of uncertainties in estimating when we'll be done. We know how much we're removing. We just say uncertainty isn't how much was released. And later in this talk, I'll explain how, how we come up with our projection of being done in 2023 to 2025. Um, last time we presented to the committee or provided information in our reports, we had recommended that Ned approved us going to DEM to seek approval for closure and transition to basically just monitoring, shut down the active system. DEM reluctant to agree and would not agree to ending active remediation. They were more comfortable with us continuing doing what we were doing um, because it's a school and because we're in a wellhead protection area. And um, their current requirement is that we achieve complete removal of measurable, that we use the term L-NAPL and that's basically floating oil in a monitoring well. So if we have any oil, still measurable, uh, we can't, can't close out the active system. Um, a, a good note, we've gotten approval for reducing the monitoring requirements, the period of monitoring, the number of wells. We closed out some wells, horizontal wells. Um, okay. Could, could you go to the next slide for me? Thank you. So for those of you who don't know where we're talking about, um, that in red is the area, original area of the uh, distribution of the fuel oil on the groundwater table. It's about 20 feet below the building. Um, and to get you oriented, north is, is, is upward. And the reason for DEM's concern is the public wells that are marked there GW1, GW2, GW3 that serve the school. Now, we've hit a point of showing groundwater flow is not towards those wells and being attenuated. An intestine's been done and there's no impact on the wells, but it's still considered a sensitive site. So could you go to the next one? No, thank you. Um, uh, this may be a very busy for people, but just give you a quick picture. This is a different orientation from what you just saw. Now, north is to the left where the public wells are. You see that the shaded areas in the tan shaded area is the, does dissolve fuel oil and groundwater. Uh, the original tank leak area was the lower part of this image. Um, and there was also a release from the boiler room, which is uh, to the left middle uh, blob that you see. Uh, fuel leaked from the connections, the piping connections at the tank and at the boiler house. And that resulted in this extensive area of fuel. And that resulted in this extensive area of fuel in soil and ground. Okay, thank you. Could you go to the next one, please? Now, you know, engineers love plots, so hopefully people will appreciate this. This is a plot of the fuel oil being removed. Can you inch it up just a little so people can see? There's a timeline on the bottom. Active remediation started in 1999. That's the left side. Yeah, right there. Great. And so there was immediate removal of soil, which removed about 2,000 gallons of oil. And then the pump and treat system started operating. And you can see how flat that line is. That's the rate of oil removal per year. And it averaged around 50 gallons per month and then leveled off to about 16 gallons per month. The pump and treat system really wasn't removing a lot of oil and it was fairly expensive. So you see 2010, we installed the bio vent system. And you see how the slope increases. That's showing much greater removal each year over time. And ultimately, we want to see this start to level off the rate decrease as we get to our goal. The main point of this slide is the bio venting, very effective removal, much more effective than we were doing before. Thank you. Could you go to the next slide? It's a very busy image, but we were challenged a number of years ago by the school committee to predict how long this would take. We said, we know what we're removing. We don't really know what was released. And we had discussions with people about the availability of records. And people, the school were able to find all the fuel delivery records. And the black, the blue squares on this image are the, the record of fuel deliveries to the school over time. If you can inch it up just a little more, you'll see, going back to when the school was constructed in 1989, all the way up to present, there's a period where the fuel deliveries all average about, I think it was like 63,000 gallons per year. That's that line was pink. You didn't, you didn't have records prior to that, but let's assume, we assume there was pretty consistent delivery over that time period. What happens is when the leaks were completely stopped in 2002, when the second leak at the boiler house was identified, there's an abrupt drop in the consume, what's delivered to the school. Now, there could be a variety of things to explain this, but we think it was because the actual leak was stopped. So we use that change, which was about 8,000 gallons per year, and assumed that that was the leak rate over that time period. If you go to the next slide, we use that to do what we call ballpark accounting, because this is the best that we can do to come up with an estimate. So you see the first line in this table says fuel release, delivery records. Based on those records, we could be looking at 108,000 gallons having been released. And then we looked at the area that this spread over and the properties of the soil. Soil will absorb oil, you know, if you spill oil in your driveway soaked up by the soil, there's actually a rule of thumb about how much it can absorb. And so we looked at the whole, whole distribution and said, that soil has a capability of absorbing actually a good portion of that oil and holding it in an immobile form. And then the pump and treat system operation, the soil removal, all those in red, the negatives are the actual remedial removal to get to the point where we don't have any more free oil. That's what the state wants is no more measurable oil in the well, which is roughly associated with what's free. So if you run these numbers, it's a rough approximation. It's giving us some sense of where we may be, come up with about three and a half years. And knowing how rough that is, we said, well, you're really probably looking at three to five years. Now, if you go to the next slide, we don't think this estimate is unreasonable, as you'll see why, if you can inch it up a little. In this timeline, you're looking at this measurable thickness of oil in the wells. And you'll see at 2005, there was mean of that, the line running through that plot, those bar graphs, was about five feet of oil. So on average, over an acre area, we have five feet of oil measurable in a well. We are now down to about a half foot. So plus 90% removal of what was there. And we are seeing very little oil most of the year. There's only a brief periods when the groundwater table, under dry conditions as well. So we think we're close. Yeah, if you go to the next one, and I'm getting close to the end. I think this is interesting, but I know probably most people just want to get to the question and the answer. So. Now, where did we get the $600,000 savings? This figure shows the cost that you all were paying. In 2005, you see $194,000. Anyway, the blue is the pump and treat system and other things that were being done to try to get the fuel oil removed. So it averaged about, I think, $85,000 roughly dollars per year. And now, when you go into the red, we transition over into the bio vent system. So there's a cost to take out the pump and treat, put the bio vent in. But now you see the operating costs are dramatically less. And so each year, we're saving money over what would have been spent and we're removing more. And we're doing everything we can to keep bringing those costs down by reducing the number of wells we monitor. You know, how, how the duration over the year that we have to perform the monitoring and consult consultation with the, with their approval. We've been able to get to cost. So that, that's it for the presentation. Please, if anyone has questions, Al or I can answer.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Day?
I don't really have a question. I just felt that this was something that been going on for 20 years or more around that. And I thought that at least there's a couple of individuals on the school committee that probably were not aware of this. The one thing that I do want to commend, one of our former school committee members, Deb Connie from Charleston. She come on the board shortly after this. And she started asking questions and we started asking more questions because of questions she asked. And this is when we decided that the previous individual, company that was doing this was just interested in charging us the six to $700,000 they have charged us over those number of years when, so we went out and hired GVS Air and GZA, I'm sorry. And they come in with a program to really save the district money and really tackle the program. So I just think that this is going to be something that the state of Rhode Island is going to have final say in. But these, this company is doing such a fantastic job and saving the district money because there's no way we're not going to be able to get the, get this remediated without, without their support and their help. And they work very closely with DEM and eventually we will not have this. Were we, were we down here to what? A little over, little over $15,000 compared to what we were 10, 12 years ago. We were spending over $100,000 going somewhere. So I got to commend this company. And I want to again, shout out to Deb Connie for, for her hard work and moving this thing out of the previous company that was taking our money and telling us they were doing the best they could, which was in that case not the truth.
Thank you. Mr. Abbott?
Yes, question, two questions. Where do the vapors end up? Are they released into the atmosphere? And are any vapors detected within the middle school?
Okay, very good question. So the vapors are passed through activated carbon vessel in the small shed behind the school. It's good to note that actually, our goal isn't really to draw vapors out. So we draw just enough air to get oxygen down into the ground. So we don't really vent much out of the ground, especially at this point. Initially, there were higher concentrations in the, in the vapors. But right now, technically, we don't even really need treatment, but we've left the treatment on because it is a school and we know, you know, the school committee will want us to be very conservative. And your second question.
Are the vapors detectable within the middle school?
Oh, okay. So yeah, good question. So we maintain a vacuum below the building. So air, the soil vapor below the building. If anything, we're drawing air out of the building into the ground, not, not the reverse. It's like, you know, a whole radon protection system. It's running. The system runs during the time of the year when the fuel is exposed. So learns from people through.
Are you testing the vapors in the, are you testing the air in the middle school for the presence of vapors?
No, 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 we aren't. There's a good reason for that. As long as we're doing what we're doing, there's no reason to believe that what's under the building can be getting into the building. And testing indoor air is, is fraught with all sorts of issues of false positives and you know, if you tested a typical home that uses fuel oil, you, you'll detect something. And it doesn't mean that it's coming in from, you know, below a structure. So, you know, our focus is on ensuring that this isn't an issue. If you do test, often you see things and then you're not sure where is it from. Someone can, someone can do like dry cleaning and of their clothes and come into a building and introduce contaminants. So you end up with this testing and trying to sort out what it means when really the focus should be on making sure it can't happen from below the bill.
George, I asked superintendent to speak to this because I, it was a good question. I'd like to know. So if they test the air quality in the school.
It is tested. I don't have to schedule with me, so I'd have to get that for you, Mr. Abbott. But with all the HEPA filters running through the building, the air is constantly being filtered all year long. More than, more than ever this year.
If you could get the results, I would be interested.
Yeah. And we can add it.
But it'd be good to know.
Absolutely.
Good question. Any other questions?
Thank you so much, John Alba.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Day, for bringing that to our attention.
Oh, you're very welcome. And thank you. Appreciate you giving the opportunity. Good night.
Good night.
The next item on the agenda is a field trip request. High school girls volleyball team. I recommend approval of the request of Coach Katherine McGeehan and Assistant Coach Sean Cole for 12 students and two chaperones to travel to Horseheads High School, Horseheads, New York, October 15th through 16th, 2021. For a high school girls volleyball tournament contingent upon COVID guidelines, allowing travel between states in attendance at the event. Transportation will be provided by either Ocean State Transit or District Vans. Insurance documents are already on file.
Okay, there was a motion and a second to approve of the field trip requests for the high school girls volleyball team. I open this up to questions and discussion. Mr. Luzon?
Just, just a quick note. This is the first time in approximately 15, 16 months we've done this. Possibly coming out of the dark.
We hope. It was a nice time to see the forum, right? Okay, well, if there's any, no other questions, I will ask the committee to vote. Those in favor of the field trip request?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you, was it raised with regards to the field trip request? In this discussion? Okay. Yeah, well, we're in the middle of a vote. Sure. I guess we'll table the vote just for a second. Who's, hello, who's speaking, please, or who wants to speak?
Thea Brennan. Is that who you said, John? Thea Brennan.
Oh, Thea Brennan. No. Okay, okay. Thank you, Sean. Okay, so we'll continue our vote. Those in favor of the field trip request? Any opposed? Thank you, Donna. Any opposed, refusals, or abstentions? Lisa, did you vote? Lisa MacCaruso? Okay, then. Okay, thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan Grant, the Charro Alter Learning Academy. And we have Katie Kierakosian, I believe she's going to raise her hand for you, Sean, and Director Brian Tatro in the back, who will be presenting on this work.
Hi, Katie.
Hello. It seems I might not be able, oh, there we go, to screen share. I can now. Can everyone hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Gesante. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you. Again, my name is Katie Kierakosian, and I'm the Development Officer for the District. And it's also been my distinct pleasure to serve as the Program Manager for CALA CSIP work the past two years. The work I'm about to present is the work of many. And I want to start by recognizing the work of the CALA Community Advisory Board, or CAB, made up of parents and community members, school-based team members, including administrators, teachers, and VMAs. So again, I am presenting on CALA's Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, or CSIP, and funding request. This is due to ride on July 23rd, and we are eligible to request up to $106,252.76. The CSIP would span the 12-month period starting October 1st, 2021, and closing September 30th, 2022. CALA's Community Advisory Board began this work in 2019 by crafting three goals, which you see here. These include an increase in four-year graduation rate, an improvement in students' ELA and math achievement and growth, and a commitment to ensuring CALA students feel connected, respected, and valued. From these three goals are five interventions, which is where the work really happens and for which our funding is needed. And I wanted to take a moment to review our five interventions and specifically highlight our funding needs within each intervention in my next slides. Intervention A is focused on a multi-tiered system of supports, or MTSS. A great deal of work was done here through previous CSIP funding requests to craft and hone a multi-tiered system for CALA students. This system has been up and running since last school year and includes weekly meetings for student data review and goal setting. No MTSS-specific funding is needed this coming year. Our two requests connected to this intervention include the continuation of a program manager and the continuation of after-school tutoring to be facilitated by CALA teachers. Intervention B relates to two initiatives, the continuation of the CHIL mentoring program and to implement a job coaching program. and to implement a job coaching program through a partnership with Junior Achievement. More specifically, we would offer two stipended positions for these initiatives and include supply funds for both as well. Through a job coach program, we also propose to offer small stipends to a pilot group of juniors and seniors who successfully complete an internship next school year. Our third intervention connects to core literacy. And due to the district's focus on implementing a new ELA curriculum next year, we will not be requesting any funds for this intervention, but reassessing CALA's needs here at the end of next year. Intervention D focuses on diverse learning and project-based learning. And as you can see, has been a rich area for improvement work at CALA. We propose to continue registered behavior training, or RBT, work with VMAs. We would also propose to continue project-based learning lesson studies and plan for PBL supply needs. We would like to offer a one-day optional PD for teachers on project-based learning, as well as a second optional day for teachers and VMAs that ties project-based learning to graduation pathways for CALA students. And to preface number six through nine, as I know there's a lot with Intervention D. Last year, research was started to explore high-performing alternative schools. Through this process, some deep connections have been forged with partner schools in the region as well as nationally. We would like to continue this work this year and consider ways of developing a professional learning community, or PLC, with these schools, as well as initiate in-person site visits and host virtual meetings with schools outside of driving distance. Lastly, we would like to send a small CALA group to attend, and this is of staff, to be clear, to attend the High Tech High Deeper Learning Conference in California next March. Last but not least, our fifth intervention focuses on social emotional learning and health and wellness. Here, we seek to create a stipended position for an SEL Health and Wellness Coordinator, continue CALA courtyard improvements, create an outdoor learning and collaborative space at CALA Ashway, and purchase cabinets and supplies for a school pantry/school store for students to cash in, earn points through CALA's point-level token economy system. Finally, we would like to bring in consultants each month to expose CALA students to diverse enrichment opportunities that promote social emotional learning and growth. Thank you for your time. As mentioned, CALA's Director Brian Tatro and I are happy to address any questions on our C SIP funding request, if there are any.
Mr. Luzon?
Great presentation, Katie. $106,000 paid for all that?
Yes, sir, it does. I'm a stickler, so I get every penny we can.
So a job coach, job coaches, like, what would that be as an FTE per se?
It's a stipended, the job coach as well as the mentoring coordinator are stipended positions. So it is not an FTE.
Well, I just wanted to correlate that so people can understand that.
Oh, I understand. I believe it's. Let me stop sharing so I can pull up my.
I'm asking these questions so the public hears it.
Absolutely. I believe that is six hours a week for the school year.
Yes, at $45, yeah, $45 an hour.
Budgeted, yes, at $45 an hour.
For 40 weeks.
Well, thank you very much.
I think it's an interesting question, the difference between an FTE and stipended position. Maybe that may, to be more clarified, is that it's a stipend position of someone that does it after their normal FTE business, you know, after their, this would be like more of a, Brian, you want to speak to this?
We do have two CALA staff who have taken those positions, and they do their work outside of school hours.
I think in several months, we'll be doing budgets.
Yes. Mr. Stoff? Oh, Mr. Day, I'm sorry. Mr. Day had his, okay, I'm sorry.
I notice that, or I understand this is a one-year shot. Where do we go from here? I mean, we're, we're going to have a group of students that are going to be hopefully better prepared to know, how do we deal with the students beyond this school year? I think this is very important. 99% of this is in salaries. I don't envision the school district being able to continue with these kind of stipends in the future. So I want to make sure that if we're going to come up with something, it's going to be more than a one-shot deal. So I'd like to have some explanation as to, as to how we service students beyond this grant.
So Katie, how long has the grant been going for? How many years?
This is the third request that we have made. And much of it is capacity building, not all of it, but some of it. For example, last year, or our first year, we requested funds to have a group come together and create a multi-tiered system of support. And then, once that MTSS system was made, teams came together, discussed, reviewed, and now it is in process. So that need to create that MTSS system is no longer in existence. So the hope is, as systems are created, right, like the bird out of the nest, right? When they're ready to fly, they fly. And we anticipate, because of COVID, that we, we wait to hear from RIDE if we are re-identified. And because of COVID and all of the disruptions that it's lent, we anticipate the potential for re-identification, and then we are eligible for another year. So that is why we have applied for three years now and been eligible for three years' worth of funding.
So that's a very good example. And another example I could give is that three interventions this past year that really came together nicely in the spring, where the deeper learning book study and project-based learning lesson study, and then the nationwide research that we did. So basically, through all those, all that work, you know, they've developed, the teachers have developed lessons, project-based learning, that are going to be implemented this year and will continue to do that. Now, with the training they received this past year, they'll be able to do that on a continuing basis without necessarily requesting funds.
It's good.
Mr. Stoff? You had a comment?
Yes, I have two questions entirely unrelated to each other. So I'll just give you both, and then you can answer them. The first question was on Intervention D. I was just curious about the heading of that Intervention D. It was diversity in project-based learning. And then the things in the outline seem to be mostly about the project-based learning. When I see diversity as one of our kind of buzzwords, I wonder what it's there for. And was the diversity piece, the relationships with other schools? Or was there something else in there that the diversity piece was for? So that's my first question, is what does diversity mean in Intervention D? My second question is, and I like it, I just want some clarification, the idea of a stipend for students in internships. I, that's, that's a strange concept to me. Do we pay students, are we paying students out of grant? Does that mean we're paying students out of budget? Does that mean students become, we're putting students on payroll? And they're entitled to other benefits? So I don't, I want to know, how does that work? What does that mean? It's an interesting idea, and I'm not opposed to it. I just, it's strange and foreign to me. And so how do we do that?
I'm happy to address both those questions, and they're excellent ones. I apologize if the term was out of place in terms of diversity and might have made a different association. So my apologies, but actually, I had the same thought myself when it was first suggested. So the term diversity there, I was trying to do shorthand to fit everything for the visual appeal. However, diversity there really refers to our diverse learners. So the diversity of learning. And the fact that project-based learning helps address diverse learning because it's a variety of contexts and allowing students to engage in lessons in diverse ways. So it's really related to that. That's also why we are working to take students out of CALA itself, although it's a beautiful building, and thank you all for your part in that. We also want them to engage in the community in diverse ways. So again, it has to do with the neurodiversity of our students. And then in terms of the stipend, I was inspired in seeing that this had been proposed, for example, through RIDE in another context. So I'm, it has gone through the process of sharing and conversing with various administrators. But I think it is a novel concept, and we've been applauded by RIDE for thinking in creative ways about how to use these funds versus, for example, just hiring an FTE, which could be that amount, just thinking of very unique ways of using the funds. So I saw on, on social media that there was something similar being done with the Oliver Hazard Perry and students doing a marine-based internship on the ship. And it's supported by RIDE, and they were also receiving a $500 stipend upon successful completion of the internship. This is very much connected to our junior achievement work and the job coaching program. So students in this pilot year would have to go through a very, a very rigorous process of going through a variety of programs offered by Junior Achievement to feel as though they are in the position of taking on that internship as an opportunity. But that's our expectation for our high school students. And CALA students are our high school students as well. So it would take them through the same progression, but offer them the opportunity for them to get a paid internship, and the funding would come from the C SIP itself in a modest amount. If five students were to participate in the pilot, $2,500 total.
Here, a quick follow-up. I would also like to applaud you for that, Katie. I think that's really good. I like that thought.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Macarusa?
Okay, hi, Brian. Thank you both. It's good to see you. See you. I want to go back to the goals page. And I want to talk a little bit or ask you to just give us a touch point or an update on two, two goals. When I spoke with Brian at graduation this past June, I believe, when we were talking about the Alternative Learning Academy, you said that we had four graduates this year.
There were seven, seven graduates this year.
Seven. I said, you know, I said it lower, just so you could come in and say.
Yeah, there were six from the ALP and one from the Clinical Day Program.
Very good. Good teamwork. So what I want to ask, right, because that ties into that first goal there. That's wonderful. Out of how many potential graduates did we graduate? And so I need to know that for this particular vote, on graduation day, that was not the conversation, or we were there to celebrate. But I do need to understand, out of how many students were eligible, could have been eligible for graduation, what percentage is that?
So out of the students who are actually considered 12th graders at the beginning of the year, all of them graduated. So we had 100% of the students who are eligible. So the reason why, you know, we don't get credit for that for RIDE is because of the way they start the clock on the graduation process. They start, they look at schools for, as soon as a student becomes a freshman, they start the clock on graduation. So if they don't graduate in four years, then, you know, we get dinged for that student not graduating on time. What we found through our research is actually, other states have alternative school accountability systems that start the clock when the student becomes a senior. So if that was the case this year, here in Rhode Island at CALA, we would have had 100% graduation rate this year.
Yeah. Outstanding that this community, and I know, I know RIDE's metric, and it's unfortunate. But this, what that does and says for our community, this, this community that's having these difficult conversations, had difficult conversations about this building, this school, and came together and approved that building across three towns for these students. So to see that type of response, right, is encouraging. You lean into these more difficult concepts, and you keep moving forward. So I didn't expect you to say 100%, by the way. I did not expect that. So that's, that's the epic. The other goal that I need a little bit of information on is the blue one, ensuring that students feel connected, respected, and valued. So again, right, during kind of my term, you know, this building, moving from the trailers to, you know, a sustainable, equitable facility, was all about this, right? It was all about feeling included and belonging within our community with the intention of those students' emotional wellness improving, improving, and therefore their academics improving, right? And so you just showed us the academic piece. I understand how you're measuring whether or not the students feel connected, respected, and valued. But what are they saying so far? Can you, can you give us a little insight as to what the students have been saying as you're taking these formative assessments along the way?
So I don't have the SurveyWorks numbers in front of me, but I do know that across the board, I'd say they improved in 80% or more of the categories that we're, you know, asking questions about for the students. And I could, you know, if I got the numbers, which I don't have in front of me, I could be a little.
For this one, for this one, the numbers are less important than, than the takeaways. Are, right, are students feeling like they are valued? And so what are they saying? Why, why do they feel more valued, and what ways do they feel valued? Just some qualitative, just give me a little qualitative data. I don't need the numbers right now for this one.
So, you know, anecdotally, I think the students, a vast majority of them come into the building feeling really good. And we have a social emotional learning curriculum that we start each day off with. And we kind of take the temperature of how the students are feeling when they come in. And, you know, we have data on that as well. And the students, by and large, are feeling connected and, you know, happy to be in the building with such caring staff that we have. And I think if you polled the staff, you would, you know, get a resounding, you know, positive feedback from them, just to say how much the school has grown since the new building has been in place. And I've only been here for one year, but I can see, you know, where, how the progress is moving along, and we're looking to take that further next year.
Well, welcome back, and thank you.
Thank you.
If I may build upon what Mr. Tatro said as well, the SEL Curriculum Lion's Quest is just another example of the capacity building. So we did that work, and it was a year-long process of having a long list, a short list of different possibilities, and then purchasing the curriculum, which is a one-time purchase for the grades. And now we have that. So now we can check, I don't want to say check a box, but now we can say we have selected this curriculum for a variety of reasons. And now we can utilize our funds in a new way, still focused on SEL as a major goal.
Well said. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie. Anyone else? School committee members? Any more questions for Katie and/or Brian? No? Okay, so there's been a recommendation by the superintendent to approve, to approve the submission of, of the grant. No, we didn't. I said it was, right. Okay, so we had a motion in the second to accept the recommendation from the superintendent to submit the C SIP. Those in favor? Oh, I think we had, I mean, I'd say we had enough discussions. I don't think we need to do anymore. So, okay, those in favor?
I.
Okay, any opposed, refusals, or abstentions? It looks like that's unanimous. Thank you so much. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Katie.
Thanks, Brian.
The next item on the agenda is the NEA Charrojo contract, a one-year extension. I recommend approval of the tentative agreement between the Charrojo Regional School District Committee and the NEA Charrojo. I recommend approval of the tentative agreement between the Charrahoo Regional School District Committee and the NEA-Charrahoo.
Okay, so it was a motion to accept, to approve the tentative agreement between the Charrahoo Regional School District Committee and the NEA-Charrahoo. It was seconded by Linda McAllister. Any conversations or discussions on this, Mr. Stahl?
I just want to make a public comment. We, we talked about this and agreed that there's nothing we can do. I can't change anything about this now. I'm fine with the local agreement we have here. I'm going to abstain on this vote, just because I don't want to vote yes for anything that says NEA on it right now. Because I'm just not happy with what the organization's doing nationally. But there's nothing I can do about that now, but I'm abstaining and wanted to say why.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stahl. Any other person, any other comments or questions with regards to this motion? Okay, those in favor, accepting the tentative agreement?
Yes. Yes.
Two, three, four. Those, seven, okay. Those opposed? Abstentions? That's three abstentions. Okay. That's all of us, so no recusals. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that, that did pass with a vote of seven votes. Thank you, everyone.
Next item on the agenda is a request to, to ride for variance withdrawal. Our community input is very important to us. Therefore, upon reflection based on our community feedback, I recommend that the district not move forward in pursuing a newer and fewer plan and withdraw the variance requests submitted to RIDE.
There's been a motion and a second to request to ride for variance withdrawal. Mr. Abbott?
Yes, I'd just like to comment, in the future, if we tackle a project like this, you should form a building committee. You know, the, a building committee was formed to build this building that we're in right now. And it just didn't seem right to me that the way that was conducted carried out.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl.
That's it.
Any other questions or comments about? I move it to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Any abstentions or recusals? I think that's all. Thank you very much. On to item G.
Next item on the agenda is the Charrahoo website community tab to include link to Charrahoo Youth Task Force page. This item was requested by David Stahl.
Mr. Stahl, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
So the Charrahoo Youth Task Force website was linked from the Charrahoo School District website. It's still listed on a community tab. Earlier, a few months ago, it had pages of information about the Black Lives Matter movement and protesting tips. It had donation pages for political fundraising or fundraising for Black Lives Matter, other political causes. It had directions and links to police avoidance apps for students and kids who wanted to go and protest among the protesting tips. It had information and advice on how to turn off cell phones, turn off their location services, their facial ID and recognition, turn off safety features on their phones so they couldn't be located by parents or other people. Had information on wearing disguises, and even information directing white students on how and when to appropriately throw themselves in their bodies in front of students of color because they would be less likely to be harmed by police. I found the content to be racially divisive, to say the least, destructive, and dangerous. The Charrahoo Youth Task Force site also has a disproportionate amount of content about sexuality and gender issues. There was discussion about those things being present on the website and having it linked through the Charrahoo School District website. My question is, were laws broken? I wonder if the political fundraising piece was a violation of law. Several people expressed dissatisfaction, and it was relocated to a community tab. I'm curious about why it was relocated. I'm curious about why most of those pages and links and tabs have been removed. If they were deemed to be unacceptable or dangerous, who decided that? How they got there in the first place, why and how it was relocated to a community tab, and why it remains there? And now there are other items being put on the community tab. Who's deciding what goes there and by what criteria? And I'd like it if Superintendent Picard would answer those questions.
Absolutely. I don't know if I remember all of them, so I'll start with. I received a couple of phone calls from two community members asking about the Charrahoo Youth Task Force link. And it was listed, I want to say, under the district tab, under a series of resources. So it very much looked like, according to the two community members, that we created it and that it was our task force. I clarified that, and the two community members both said to me that it was misleading, even though, you know, they understand that the Charrahoo name is used, you know, Charrahoo Furniture, things like that. And I, I understood. So I did some, I had some conversations with district admin, school admin, IT, you know, how did the website get there? Does anybody have a history about how that worked? To their best recollection, it was just, you know, Mr. She asked things to go up, they went up. There was not necessarily a protocol or process developed. So what I asked IT to do, I did it myself, and the administrators, is we sort of culled through the website to see if there are any other links that we used that were not created by us. So I believe, to the best of my recollection, I think we found six. And we moved all of any, 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 and we may have missed some, so if we did, please let us know. What we tried to do is, anything that we don't have control over or create, we moved. I didn't delete anything because it was already there. And the Charrahoo Youth Task Force is a partner in work, which my understanding is it started in this district around substance abuse. That was the original intent when it first started. So just for clarity, I had spoken to the chair of the school committee, and I said, you know, it was a great point. I moved, I made a community tab. IT, Sean, sort of played around with it to try to get it where we needed it to be, and then we just simply moved what we could find to that tab. If I miss something, David, please.
Were you or anyone else concerned about the racially divisive things or the police avoidance apps or the safety concerns?
So the community member, one community member mentioned to me that be an ally, be an advocate concern. So I went on and we printed the pages. Brief conversation, what I talked to legal counsel about is a disclaimer enough saying that, you know, the, the opinion, I can't remember exactly what it says, but I believe it's something like, the opinions and beliefs don't necessarily match with the district beliefs. And our legal counsel said that would, that would be fine. My understanding was there was not necessarily any laws broken, but they made me aware, which is why I thought it was important to clarify that it was not a district-created site.
So we're saying that we added that disclaimer, but before that disclaimer wasn't there. Was there concern about those things being there without that disclaimer?
It was mostly based on the feedback from the two members I spoke to. I, I thought it was a good point that, you know, because they believed that because it was on the website, we had control over what was on it, and we don't. So just to make it clear that we didn't. I'm happy to revise the disclaimer. I, I did the best I could, spoke with the chair and legal counsel to try to make it as clear as possible.
I think it's better now with the disclaimer. My question is, have we acknowledged that what was there shouldn't have been there? Or who was responsible for that?
When I went on, I think the page was updated, because I think you had even asked me, David, in an email, you know, when was it removed? I wasn't, I don't know everything that was on there before, only via what I was told. Because when I went on to print, not everything that you mentioned, I saw. So it may have already been taken down or moved. I'm not sure.
And we don't know anything about that because it's not us?
Correct.
Did we have conversations with them about removing?
No, but I could, if you'd like me to.
No, they've already been removed. Did we, anyone from the school district have conversations with them about removing those?
I did not.
Did anyone from our district?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Day has a comment. Mr. Day, a question?
It's, I didn't, I was not aware of this, but again, I've been around a while, and at one time the task force was a very intricate part of the school district. And if, in fact, they were doing things like that, we should suspend their activities with the school district until they, they get their act together and, and get back in, in step with what the superintendent and the school committee used to do with, with the youth task force, because it was hand in hand. I think George will testify that, that this was very much part of what we did and what we, we, we were assisting them in getting the word out. And if they're, if they're out there off the rail or going, going in a direction that is not what the citizens of this community want, and we should suspend all activities and, and have a disclaimer with the Charrahoo Youth Task Force, because that is not what they were start, what they started to do and what they were very, working hand in hand with, with the school, school district and the school committee in, in previous years.
Okay, I'm going to let Mr. Abbott talk, and then I'll, whoever that.
Just really quick.
Sure.
These tactics regarding demonstrations, whatever you want to call them, you know, they're more reminiscent to me of like, of like the Weather Underground from 1960s. You know, it seems to me that you could be leading up to this. Now, what's the next step? To bomb a building or assassinate someone?
Ms. Juisty, and then who's on the virtual? Okay, okay. Yeah, so we have some school committee members, Ms. Juisty and then Ms. LaGore.
So just to clarify, you got questions from two community members?
Correct.
Actions were taken to move it to a community page?
Yes.
So you've had some questions, you followed through, it has been moved to a community page. I'm a big supporter of the Charrahoo Youth Task Force. I, I make no bones about it. I think it's a, it's a good resource. I'm happy that those pages were removed. But it sounds like that was a decision that they made. I'm sure Dan can speak to that more effectively than any of the rest of us can, because he's a part of the task force. But I appreciate that people had concerns. They brought them to you, you took care of them, and, and from my understanding, that's the way this all works.
And actually, just to clarify, because when it was put on the agenda, because the Charrahoo Youth Task Force does partner and, and work, I didn't let Dan know it was on the agenda. And just said that, I'm not sure what's going to be, but out of courtesy, I let him know. And it's a generous public anyway, but I did make a courtesy phone call, so he knew. I'm, and I, he asked me if he could present, and I said, no, it wasn't about that, I was just letting him know that I was moving. I also wanted to know that we moved it, so he understood why, because I, I did agree with the community members that it wasn't clear, and it did look like, even I think Ms. Hopkins had mentioned, it looked like maybe it was a teacher that was running it. So I thought it would help with clarity. I don't think we needed 100 people to tell us that. I felt after I heard two community members, that it was a very valid point. Sounds like this is the work.
Ms. LaGore? Thank you, Mr. Stahl.
Yeah, thank you. I think there was maybe a point in Mr. Stahl's comments that some people may have missed in that all of the things he said, I'm not questioning they existed at one point, but they do not currently exist on the Charrahoo Youth Task Force page. So, Mr. Day, while I'm not questioning that we should consider suspending an organization that is completely off the rails, I don't believe that is currently the case. So I just want to reiterate that before we make statements of hyperbole, we, we need to be clear what it is we're discussing. And I think, and I'm not trying to quote or misquote Mr. Stahl, but I believe he did say those pages no longer exist. My second and last point is, I think maybe an issue the school committee could consider here is, do we have any links at all? And I'm not saying yes or no, but the minute we put a link up, we have very little control after that to know what happens beyond, behind that link. So we could link to Stop &amp; Shop, because maybe we partner with them on a school bucks-type program. But if Stop &amp; Shop changes their website, we don't know that. So if we want that kind of oversight, which would be an enormous time task, maybe we would have to have a subcommittee that, on a regular basis, goes through every single link and every single page. So I, I think we, we just need to be thoughtful about what we're trying to do here. We, the proverbial throw the baby out with the bathwater, saying we just don't have any links, or we have some type of conversation about what are reasonable links that we can have up there. Thanks.
Can I make, I'm sorry? Bill, you had your hand up. I'm sorry, Mr. Sooey will be next.
Yeah, my recollection is with this organization, when they started, they, they ran programs within the school, within the school school building itself, kicked butts. We sent, we sent, we allowed kids to, to leave school and go to rallies that were positive. So I, I, you know, I, I think there's a message that has to be delivered to this group, that they've lost their focus, and they're on probation or whatever, because we, in the past, have supported that group as a school district by, by, by bussing them up to Providence for a rally, had posters in, in, in the school advocating all kinds of safe health, health issues and stuff like that. And, and they certainly have , you know, fallen, their mission is, 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 is below anything that, that, that I could support and, and are willing to support. And I think there's a message that has to be delivered somehow. Maybe, maybe, maybe I'm being a little over, over sensitive, but, you know, they were doing some good things early on in their, in their, in their formation. And they certainly, I, I'm believing Mr. Stahl and what he said, and I don't do the, do all this Facebook stuff. I'm like, I can turn my computer on. But, you know, the stuff was out there, and for them to go out there and do it without, without having the courtesy of contacting the superintendent or anybody else is, is to me the wrong, wrong thing to, to, to do, and the citizens of this community that support Charrahoo shouldn't have to bring it to the superintendent's attention, because they don't have the guts enough to, to, to ask if, if we could support something like that.
Mr. Stahl? Thank you for waiting.
I, I agree with Bill's point, and I'm, I'm, Catherine, you mentioned, this is the system at work. This is how it's supposed to work, and I fully agree. And the system has worked in that. My goal in, in rehashing it publicly is because it's been talked about publicly, it needs to be discussed here publicly. It needs to not be swept under. It needs to be discussed that it was there, that there were things there that didn't align or weren't appropriate, and that it's been adjusted. I think that's a public conversation that's worth having. I also agree with what Bill has said. It is important that the group hears from us, if they want connection or association or support for activities in the school system or a presence through our website, that they need to be careful about their content. And that it's our job to, to keep that monitored and to keep that accountability. And like Gary's suggestion of monitoring all of them, however, I think that's cumbersome and subjective. I'd rather see the whole community page go away and the whole tab go away and scrap all of them, not picking on one. I think the, the only appropriate way would be to monitor them all, and I think that's cumbersome and subjective and problematic. I, I can hear John Anderson's voice, saying, you've got to be careful how you monitor one and don't monitor another. And as soon as I suggest you at the next meeting, a community group that I think meets the criteria, but someone else doesn't, now it's going to get really difficult. So I think the whole community tab should be gone, and any group that we don't have that sort of control over the content shouldn't be listed through our website. So that's the difference. And the other two words that come out, and, and, and Gary's correct, that most of that content has been removed, although not all of it. I still find a good portion of the content objectionable, but that's my opinion. But, but the fact that those things that were so extreme were there, and were there for a good number of months, is a credibility issue for me. It's a credibility issue for me with the group and with whoever was managing or overseeing them having a presence on our website. When there's a credibility issue like that, I don't want to, I don't want a relationship with them going forward, or I want some accountability for the people that sort of let that happen. Credibility and accountability are the two key words for me there, as a, as a committee member. So I'd rather see the, the whole community tab just be relocated. They all have their own websites. They all have their own online presence, and that's fine.
Do you intend to make a motion? Just one sec, we're going to. Just one sec, we're gonna get to you guys, because.
I I I was gonna just let discussion continue. I'll make a motion if you'd like.
Well, we'll we'll continue to discuss. I just didn't know if we wanted to discuss.
I know that we remove the community tab from the Chairho website and all the organizations that are on it currently.
So we have a motion in a second to remove all the, yes, it was Gary made that. Okay, then we can continue the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Yes. Yes, Ben, wait. Could you put, could you bring Dan forward, please?
Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, hi, my name's Dan Fitzgerald. I live here in Hope Valley. I just really wanted to quickly provide a quick overview of who the Chairho Youth Task Force is and and more specifically what led to the link being on the district website. As many of you know, the Chairho Youth Task Force is a community-based organization and and the mission of the Chairho Youth Task Force is to educate, empower and engage youth and adults within our Chairho community. And more specifically, to promote health and wellness while we do that. This organization was actually created over a decade ago by middle schoolers here at Chairho and continues to be largely volunteer-run and youth and young adult driven. And a few years ago, we merged forces with the Chairho Tri-Town Task Force and Substance Use Prevention, who had more than thirty years of experience addressing substance use within our community. And over the last twelve years that I've been involved, every single month, we have a public monthly coalition meeting where we have heavy involvement from all three of our police departments here in our three towns, from faith leaders, educators, parents, students and more. And it's with their guidance that we work to arm our community with mental health and substance use resources and conduct community programming to support our community. And even, you know, recently during the COVID nineteen pandemic, nearly five thousand people accessed our Chairho Mental Health Resource section of our website. And within just a few clicks, our friends, family and neighbors had access to crisis-based supports, other local resources and preventative strategies. When I had that conversation years ago with late Superintendent Barry Ritchie about getting our link on the district website, that was his intent, to ensure that our community could get the information that they need and find external mental health and substance use resources in a timely manner. You know, it is disheartening that one subpage of a resource that was on our website could overshadow the incredible work that our community has done with this organization. You know, I I do appreciate this feedback. The resource in question was something, an external resource we linked to previously. Thanks to the the attention of the community, we realized it had been updated after we had originally added it to our community or into our our link section. So since then, it's been changed to a different resource that doesn't have some of those additional aspects of concern that that folks talked about. We do greatly appreciate feedback. That's how we all do better in our work and and we do really appreciate continued feedback and and engagement with our community. We do have a contact page right on that website. We did not receive any direct feedback anytime about that, but you know, we I'm really glad that we did receive it indirectly and and hopefully this context can provide some clarity. So thank you all for your time and and thank you for your commitment to our community and most importantly, our students.
I can appreciate all of this concern truly, but my concern is this has been a positive partnership for quite a while. And to break this tie now without without a conversation with them and without them understanding what our concerns is, I think it just needs to have more thought into it. I think they as as Bill said, they they were a positive partnership here and let's let's find out really what happened to put these things on their website and and come to terms with that and appreciate, you know, what they what happened there, appreciate the work that they've done. Thank you.
Hi, Polly Hopkins, Hopkins in Rhode Island. My question first of all is for Dan. If there were five thousand people who utilized your website for those services, how many children do you think that were underage also saw links telling them how to avoid police officers, what to do when they got arrested? This website was aimed at middle schoolers. Can I pull out some of the topics?
I think I think we I think Mr. Stahl went reviewed that.
Did he?
Yes, he did. He went through all the the list. I I don't. Yes.
Clarification, because we have a motion on the floor.
Right. Thank you.
Conversation needs to be if we're going to remove all of the links to the community.
Do you agree or disagree?
I agree that the link should be removed because
Links.
Well, it's one link and they're all under it.
No, no, there's there's six.
I understand. I understand. Sorry, back up a bit. You don't know if there has been irreparable damage done by this. This was aimed at young children. I nobody knows what they've learned on here. It was very ill conceived.
So you're you're agreeing that they should be removed.
I I agree so. I don't think the schools should take on this kind of responsibility. I think there's more than enough information in the community. And we have lovely social workers that can hand out that information to the students and many other thousands of ways to do it. And I think you could ask Mr. Anderson. It'd be a good case of CYA just to get rid of the whole thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, sir. And sir, I didn't want to miss you.
Kevin Travis from Hopkinton, thank you all for being here. I just wanted to touch base on a couple of things that Dan pointed out. I have recognized that organization throughout Chairho and over the many years. And I realize a lot of the good that they've done. However, I think in the recent past, things have kind of shifted with the organization. He specifically mentioned this evening that the mission of the Youth Task Force was to promote the health and well-being of students. However, the information that's been posted on the website directly contradicts that statement. Secondly, he mentioned that the webpages on his website were links to outside sources that he had no control over that may have changed and been updated. In regards to that, most of the literature on that website that we've been mentioning that was inappropriate was in fact pictorials and graphic materials developed by the Youth Task Force and it was not linked to outside's office or sources. So this was information that was developed by their web designer or graphic designer and the literature that they developed in-house. And this is, you know, widely known.
So you you agree with.
I I think that it should be removed completely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, your turn. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Legori, I didn't see. I had promised. Okay. Wait, okay. Go ahead. No, please. And then we'll do Ms. Legori and then Lisa. Okay, thank you.
George Jackson, Richmond. I would have to agree with Mr. Stahl. All these links should come down. I acknowledge that the Chairho Youth Task Force has served an important purpose, but it's gone off the rails and there has been response to complaints, but not enough. They're still riddled with political ideology and messaging, not only from Black Lives Matter, but you know, the Human Rights Coalition. You click the link on the Child Youth Task Force page, it goes right to the main page. And I'll quote. I'm sorry.
That's okay. You can paraphrase.
No. Continuing the fight for equality. Together we elected Joe Biden and Kamala Harris, won the Georgia runoffs and achieved majorities for the House and Senate. That one statement violates three sections of your political policies, your political action activity policies. By having this link on your website, you're using school resources to further political ideologies for or against not only candidates, political ideologies, but also political parties. It's unacceptable.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so everybody was, I know we have Ms. Legori, Lisa, and then this was on.
I I seconded the motion so we can continue to have conversation.
In case in case nobody is aware, or in case some of you aren't aware, I'm gonna read the six organizations that are actually on the community page, right? So if we were to remove this,
Right.
all of these would be gone in a future one we've done. So the Chairho Rotary Club, that's one of the links. The Chairho Youth Task Force, Community Two Thousand, which I'm not familiar with until I look.
They raised money for scholarships.
For college scholarships for youth in our community, I think. The Mattie Potts Foundation, the Rhode Island Department of Education and the Tri-County Community Action. So I I I'm speaking both to my fellow community members and the community. Again, let's be thoughtful about what we're doing. And I'm not, I I do have actually a conflict of interest with the Chairho Youth Task Force. A household member of mine is active in that community, so I won't speak to that. But I suspect a number of these people in this room may may even be members of or have donated to or have participated in events with. So I think we just need to be thoughtful about that. My second point, so that I I'm removing that sort of emotional attachment to my quantitative hat. And and I don't know if Dan Fitzgerald is still on and has this information. He talked about the importance of having this link here. So I say this with no disrespect to the Chairho schools, but I kind of doubt many people look for resources on this page. So even though I'm saying these are, these are organizations many people in this room affiliate with, I just don't believe this is where people go to look for community resources on a school page.
No, please, no conversation, please, no conversations. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Mr. Lisa, you've been waiting, Ms. MacRusso? Those are all good points.
Yeah, well, the advantage to waiting is really intelligent. People say all the really intelligent things. So Gary, yes, right, to to everything that you said, I'm glad that you pointed out the other organizations that were on that tab. I think that's really important. And so I also just wanted to make sure that the committee knows kind of my position as we are gonna move to a vote, I'm sure, at some point. Um, so Linda, same, right? We would, we should really slow this roll. Think more globally about the message that we're sending. Right? We've had a call for you know, a a task force that's been formed to be completely unseated with new people. The people that are on it are are Brown community members. Somebody said, let's get rid of that. We we've decided to pause on mental health, a mental health program after school put forth by one of our students. Good idea, go think more about it. Now we're thinking about this. We did this once, everybody, like we did this with with in a previous meeting with yoga and we all had to answer forty emails each about that. So this is like, this is a good conversation. Let people listen to this meeting, let people go replay it. Make the entire tab an agenda item so that Mattie Potts's family, maybe they want to say something about this. The fact that we're gonna have a Mattie Potts field house, like there is some deep stuff going on here. The Rotary Club, those don't we, are this kind of promoting the businesses that are part of the Rotary Club? Let's not make the same mistakes we've made, right? We've sent a lot of messages this evening that we are gonna try to be thoughtful about what we form and what we endorse. And I appreciate that that is one of the, you know, what's something that Mr. Stahl has brought to us as a committee member, right? Deeper discussion, deeper thinking. What I want us to do is take more time with that than we have, might not get to this decision so quickly. So this is not a vote tonight. I do not think we should be voting on removing this tab. We were talking about Chairho Youth Task Force. I think we've done that. If we want to do this, let's do it in the future and let each of those organizations be notified that we're gonna make this disconnect and let them discuss the impact that may have on them and our community before we take a vote. Please.
Yeah, I know when Mr. Stahl had it up first and then John, when Mr. Luzon, you're.
No, actually Gary said exactly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Stahl.
While I appreciate Lisa's comments, you know, it is on the agenda. And some of us have spent a long time thinking about it. So it's not just out of left field for some of us. I also appreciate Gary's comments. And I agree, we have to, we have to understand that what we're talking about is things that we put a stamp or an endorsement on on our website. We are not creating or killing other organizations. These organizations exist and they are bigger than us and they exist beyond us and outside of us. In fact, that's what the whole conversation is. These are not our organizations. The Chairho School District and this committee is under no obligation to host some of them. And I think it's gonna get really, really dicey if we start talking about which ones we do and which ones we don't. We're forgetting that point. And we're not, we're not we're not dissolving an organization, we're not closing an organization, we're not changing an organization. We have no voice in those organizations. We're talking about political policies here being violated by having a group there. We're talking about the credibility. Dan Fitzgerald said, we put pages up and then they were changed. Now, if this is us as a Chairho School Committee having a discussion about another organization, having a discussion about their website being listed and their conversation about things they link to in another organization that have now been changed, that statement in and of itself should be enough to make a very strong case here that we have to be very cautious about this. And the best way is to not have any of them listed. Pages get changed, pages get updated, we have no control. All kinds of policies could be violated, all kinds of legal issues could be had. We're not under any obligation and we're not, these organizations, they can thrive with or without being listed on the Chairho website. And I I promise you that if we don't take the action, other people are going to bring organizations and say, I want them listed on the community tab. And when they do, and you say, I don't think we want to list that, or we don't want to have three hundred of them and have a committee now that's going to list three hundred resources, we are not a resource clearinghouse for external organizations. There's no end to that. And there's no, there's no good way to keep it. There's no good borders there. So I'm sticking with the motion. I will be voting in favor to remove them all.
Mr. Anderson?
Sure, could I could, could the clerk read back the motion to me?
Yes.
Sorry, Donna.
The motion was made by David Stahl to remove the community tabs from the Chairho website and all links associated with them, seconded by Gary Legori.
And and I'm gonna point out to the committee that I'm looking at the agenda, I'm looking at item seven G. Seven G says Chairho Website Community Tab to include link to re to Chairho Youth Task Force page. I do not believe that Mr. Stahl's motion is within the scope of that agenda item. So I want to caution the school committee that you are treading very close, if not over the line with regard to the Open Meetings Act, because this is not what the agenda item is on your public agenda.
Point of order, Chair.
Yes.
It says Chairho Website Community Tab to include link to Chairho Youth Task Force page. Perhaps this isn't great grammar, but some of you who are English experts know there's a lot of different ways to read that sentence. My request for agenda item at last meeting was both of these things, the community tab and the Chairho Youth Task Force.
That was his, that's your exact words at the last meeting. I took them from the last meeting.
So the Chairho Website Community Tab to include.
The link to the Chairho tab, yes.
I I want to be clear that that I can't hear Mr. Stahl and if I can't hear Mr. Stahl, nobody listening on, you know, Stahl, nobody listening on, you know, through the, through the Zoom method is able to hear him, so.
I'd like to thank, thank John Anderson, that's the first time that anyone has ever asked me to be mic'd. That's great. So, no, I'm just saying, John, I think it says that the community tab to include Charahoe Youth Task Force. So I, my, obviously, we're discussing the community tab to include Charahoe Youth Task Force. I read to include as including.
John, are you concerned, this is Linda Lyle, are you concerned that the other community tabs may not have a chance to take part in this conversation?
I'm concerned, I'm concerned with that. I'm also concerned that the word include is not the same as the word remove. And if you want to remove it, then you need to be clear with the public as to what the agenda item is, and the agenda item says include, it doesn't say remove.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, I, Gary, and then Mr. Day, Mr. Legori.
I think David's point about the English majors is very relevant here, if I can defend him. You know, if there was a comma after the word tab, I think what he's saying is perfectly okay. And Donna, it's difficult to capture in his cadence if there's a comma, I mean, we're getting so deep into semantics, it's ridiculous. So if I said to the audience, I like to eat David, and you don't put a comma anywhere, that would mean I like to eat someone named David. If I put a comma after the word eat, then it means I like to eat David. That's what we're arguing here.
Now I teach the kids.
Mr. Anderson, I have to respectfully disagree in the case that, that we're getting really bogged down in something irrelevant.
And again, Mr. Legori, the, in terms of interpreting the Open Meetings Act, the Rhode Island Supreme Court has made the distinction between the singular and the plural. The Rhode Island Supreme Court has become, over the last few years, extremely strict with its interpretations of the Open Meetings Act. My job is to give the school committee advice, it's up to the school committee to decide if they wish to follow it.
Does John have any concerns about the legality of pages we can't control, or which groups we include or don't include? Since we have you, John, do you have, do you have any questions or concerns about how we are gatekeepers of that, or how, what are criteria?
And in answer, in answer to your question, I do have concerns with playing the role of gatekeepers, which is the second part of your question with regard to the first part of your question. I have frankly less of a concern from a legal perspective. Again, I'm going to point out to you that those agenda items, that this discussion that we are wandering into now is not what is on the agenda, and the Attorney General, particularly the current Attorney General, has taken a very aggressive approach towards enforcement of the Open Meetings Act.
Mr. Day, and then Mr. Luzon.
John, I suggested earlier that we suspend this group from, would this be, would this be an issue that we could work with and, and do something with, until we meet with them and, and get a clearer understanding of where they plan on going in the future? And this would give us a little bit, little control initially.
That, I mean, that's up to the, that's up to the committee, how the committee wants to move forward. I'm simply saying tonight, the motion that I asked the clerk to read back, I believe is beyond the scope of the published agenda item. I am asked, answering a very narrow question, because if the committee violates, if a complaint is filed that the committee has violated the Open Meetings Act, it will be my responsibility to defend the committee.
Luzon, your turn.
Yes, Madam Chair, we made a motion on A to table Emma's request. So information was brought forward, and we got more of that information, so I'm just throwing that out there that we can also address this next month.
I probably have a lot of next months I can, well, we can't. It's, it's fall next month, it would have to wait another month.
We could address this in the future.
Yeah. There's, yeah.
No, I just made a suggestion.
Yeah, there's a motion on the table. Okay, there is a motion on the table to eliminate all the community tabs. Who has the, oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt.
I know, I was hoping.
It's six minutes of ten, I make a motion to waive the ten o'clock policy.
There's no discussion on that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry, Donna.
Sorry.
I second that. So just a quick procedural question, what would be an appropriate motion, John, under this agenda item?
The way, the way the agenda item is worded, I can't, right here, sitting here, think of one.
Okay, so in case I'm not at a future meeting where this is discussed, for the items, Community 2000, Mattie Potts Foundation, anything else that is donation oriented, financial support oriented, if you guys are to completely eliminate the community tab, would you consider putting those under the Support Charahoe tab? No motion necessary, just take your notes, put in a folder. I donate to both of those, I'm on, you know, both of those boards, I would really appreciate that those, you know, stay as resources, even if Gary's right, that is not how I find them ninety-nine percent of the time, I just Google them. But if you guys can discuss, consider that those may be Support Charahoe, something you, you could consider putting under there, even if there is disclaimer language, I'd appreciate it. One other question, if I can, the links, David, that you found were embedded in the Charahoe Youth Task Force website, or they were just listed on the face of the Charahoe District website? Because I'm, I think I'm seeing a different configuration here and now than what you articulated and what some other members of the community have seen.
So it was a click on Charahoe Youth Task Force from the Charahoe website, and then those were embedded in the Task Force, Charahoe Task Force.
Okay, so any changes to the Task Force website came from the backend of the Task Force? There's no one else outside of the district that has backend access?
I don't.
To the district website? Okay, so that's how changes were made, you superintendent were not aware of when or how?
Not how, so I did the community tab, and I.
But the, the changes that David articulated.
From the Task Force, no, I haven't.
Okay, so there are embedded links in the Task Force website. Okay, all right, so if there is a motion to get rid of the community page, if you guys proceed that way, if in the future you can consider or discuss taking some of the more financial websites and resources and moving them to the Support Charahoe page where the Alumni Association is, I would appreciate it.
Given, just, I'd like to make a comment, I've sort of been listening to everyone, given what Amanda just said, I, I think this is, like, I'm concerned that we're going to get rid of some tabs and community organizations that are useful and may be very positive. So I would, and I liked Gary's idea, at some point, not a committee to oversee, but maybe a short-term committee that would look at all these websites on our current, you know, that are linked to our current website, a committee of school committee members, and come back with some recommendations to us, rather than throwing everything out at this point. There may be some that we might want to keep, and some, I mean, maybe John says, maybe that's not right, and maybe we're making decisions that we shouldn't make, but I just feel like we're being a little bit rash tonight, and I thought maybe if we step back just a, a few and, and maybe think about it, what we're actually doing, and, and then come back and make, and this, this subcommittee can make recommendations to the full committee. I'm just, just a suggestion. Yes, George?
This, this is just a suggestion, perhaps if, this is going to be amended, revised, you could put a stipulation that no website link should promote behavior that contradicts the Charahoe Code of Conduct or the law.
Yeah. I, I think that's, that all these things are great ideas, and I think that we're, there's a lot that needs to be considered before we either throw everything out, or, you know, keep, you know, maybe we decide at the very end that we don't want to have community links, that we don't want to be responsible for community links, but I think there's so many other factors that we haven't considered tonight, that I think we, we need some time to step back and maybe, and think about that. That's just a suggestion, and I've been just listening to everybody, so I don't, I'd love to hear feedback. Catherine had her hand up, and then I'll take it. I'm sure you've been waiting very patiently, like, in the blue shirt. Catherine?
I'm conflicted. I'm not, I will abstain from this vote, I'm not going to vote on this. I just think it's, it's moving too quickly, I'm not comfortable with it. We have links on that page, I've already been clear, I'm a supporter of the Task Force, and also supported Community 2000 on their board. You know, I, I appreciate Charahoe Rotary, so to just get rid of everything, like Gary said, for the baby out with the bathwater, I think, I'm not, I'm not ready to get rid of it all, so I would be abstaining from this vote, and I, you know, if others are uncomfortable, they should vote the way they see fit.
Mr. Stahl?
You were asking for, for feedback on what we were thinking about that, and I, you know, I do like the suggestion from Amanda of places where we can put things back that are fundraising pages, that are district connected, that are fundraising pages. I think there's a place to put those back, but that, to me, is still a conversation of, let's figure out what to put back. The, the best way, or only reasonable way for me is still, still to proceed with this vote to remove this tab, remove these pages, but then look for a group that says, a committee or some of our administrators to say, which of these things are fundraising things for Charahoe, that should be put back under a Support Charahoe tab, and then look at that, and bring a recommendation back to us. It's, again, if nobody's, you know, if we're not going to break an organization by taking them off our page, we're not going to break an organization by taking them off our page for a month, certainly.
Yes, go ahead. Oh, wait, the man in the back first, sorry. Sorry, sorry. Thank you for waiting, sir.
No, I appreciate it. Jason DePonte, I'm from Hope Valley. Not to get into the details of whether or not we support organizations or not, I just think it's a very slippery slope when you support an organization in its entirety, rather than a specific cause of that organization. For example, I also support Community 2000 Golf, make donations. I think if we support the golf tournament itself, it's finite, the tournament comes and it goes, once it's over, it's over. If you have something on the page that it's going to require constant monitoring, I think we all know that the, the internet changes every second, if not less than that, so that, I, I think it's a huge task to even put a committee together to try to monitor a specific link on our site, then a link that's on their site, which links to our site, and I wouldn't want to be tasked with that, so I don't, I don't envy any of you who be, who get, who get on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, thank you for waiting again.
Sorry, and I think, just like with many other situations that we're encountering recently, it's all learning. We've learned that we're not in control of a website that isn't ours and what could be on that. However, I'm not supportive of throwing everything out, maybe, as you stated in the end, so I would support having some kind of group to take a look at it, to see, do we set certain prior parameters? So we approve you to, you know, have on your website that's linked to our page, items of A, B, and C, but, you know, if they put Z, they're gone, some things like that, where I think before we just didn't have to think outside the box on that, but now world's a little bit different, so we might want to think about that, and then, like you said, maybe in the end, not have anything, but, and also talk to those organizations, what are their thoughts on this? If it's not really going to affect them in any way, then it's a moot point, and we can just get rid of it and move on. Thank you.
I think, Sharva, are people waiting? No? Okay. Ms. Hopkins, you'll be the last person, and then we'll bring it to a vote. You've had two bites of the apple, so you've, you've.
I just have a question. Mrs. Picard, you said you created the community tab?
We're, we're talking about getting rid of.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Not me personally, I asked.
You had it created. When was that?
It wasn't long ago, actually, the same week that I spoke with the, the general, okay, members, I can't recall off the top of my head. It wasn't long ago, maybe two weeks ago?
Yes, and when I checked that community tab, the only thing on that was the Charahoe Youth Task Force. In between the time I checked it then, all of these other groups have been added. So we have a little semantics problem with what, how all of this is.
I'm happy, do you mind if I?
Yeah, please.
So when I got the call, I had spoken with IT, and I asked if it was possible, and if they could work around, explaining that, you know, one, one site, I haven't gone through the website at this point, and I asked IT, myself, and a couple other admins to start going through, so knowing that we were going to move it, the IT department took the Task Force link and moved it first, and they actually, if you, if you saw it, they had the icon, and I said, oh, no, no, not just the icon, like, just put the, the link, so this way we don't get into, is it the icon that's a concern? And then, to be honest with you, it was the end of school, we were a little busy, so the IT couldn't finish the page, we were still talking through it, so you probably saw it was live, I don't know if that was the best way to do it, but that's how they did it, and then we just found any other, IT would say, okay, we found, how about this one, how about that one? So we, one, like, the, the Tri-Town Community Action Group was actually called on our website.
I'm aware of what they are.
Yeah, but we had to, I think, we just had to cull through it, and the goal was to make sure, to be fair, that we, any, any link we didn't create, we did the same thing.
So I think what I'm saying is, if I could clarify, there was a complaint about the items on the Charahoe Youth, Youth Task Force. Some of those items were fixed and deleted from, I, I might be saying it the wrong way, but the, it was cleaned up a bit, and then it was moved to the community tab, and I want to understand the timeframe, was that done when we discussed putting this on the agenda, and then afterwards, the other items were added to that community tab?
No, no, that wasn't.
I'm just.
I had two, the, one community feedback was just about getting rid of the link completely, didn't think it was appropriate to have on the district website, and the other community member, it was more about the confusion around using the word Charahoe, and feeling that it was misleading, that it automatically looked like a district site, and that we would have created it because it says Charahoe, so.
There's, there's still very harmful things on there for middle-school-aged children. That's besides the point, and I lost my other thought, so.
Thank you very much, okay. You're, okay, sir, you're the last person to speak, we need to bring this to a vote.
Okay, quick.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And I can tell you what day that was done.
Okay, because.
I did send it to me, and I did do it for.
It was collecting thousands and thousands of Chrome blocks, but I, I, no worries, Sean.
Sir, you have a floor?
Yeah, Rich Spielwoll, I'm from Hopkinton. I had a bunch of other stuff, but I'm going to talk to what you just said about IT. I work for a big company, and we're all arguing about getting rid of tabs and websites and helpful stuff and potentially harmful stuff. If you have an IT department that's functional, in order to filter that stuff out, there are many, many ways, I'm sure your IT department is very aware of how to filter things through keywords, what's available on your website, what's not, you know, what can be present. If this keyword shows up, it's gone. I have that at my place of business, which is pretty strict, and I think it should be even stricter when we're talking about the youth of our community. So, I mean, I don't think that counsel is needed or anything like that, I think we have software that can take care of that pretty easily, so.
Thank you, good suggestion, thank you. So we'll bring, I'm sorry, we're going to bring this to a vote. The vote right now is, the motion was made by Mr. Stahl to eliminate all, Mr. Stahl? Well, you want to read that? Yeah, I'm sorry, never mind.
To remove the community tab from the Charahoe website and all links associated with it.
And it was seconded by Mr. Legori. Okay, I think we're done with discussion, so let's take a vote, those in favor? Those opposed? Linda, you're opposed.
And what about anybody? Chair, I'm, I'm going to change mine to abstain, to follow the legal advice. I, I feel no, but I'm voting abstention, so that I'm not participating in an illegal motion. Chair, I'm, I'm going to change mine to abstain, to follow the legal advice. I, I, I feel no, but I'm voting abstention, so that I'm not participating in an illegal motion.
I'm voting no.
Okay, so Donna's now abstention, so, I'm voting, I'm abstaining too, and then Catherine. Catherine.
I abstain.
George abstaining.
So, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Thank you. One in favor, one, two, three, four, five opposed, four abstained. So, we failed.
The next item on the agenda is creation of a policy subcommittee, and I recommend approval that the chair put together a policy subcommittee of the school committee.
So, we'll. I'm not volunteering for it.
So, for, just for the sake of time, because we're running out of time, I think it would be best if, if those who are interested in working on this policy subcommittee, Miss Picard, want to just explain a little bit, so that people realize, like, what our goal is to.
There's lots of policies that need to be revised continuously, and it, it was helpful to have the school committee lens ahead of time, so that it helps save time, gets the, the, the feedback immediately prior to coming to the school committee, which gets the whole vote. Lots of school committees do this, so, similar to like you do any policy committee, if you're interested, you would be sort of reviewing the policy ahead of time to provide the district with feedback prior to it coming to the table for the whole school committee to review.
Let me just generally, is anyone?
We have to take a vote on it first.
Yes, okay, sorry.
Before we have members.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, so, did, okay, so any more discussion on the policies? Yes?
I wouldn't recommend forming that right now, because we're missing.
Oh, that's true, too.
I, I agree that we should have this, but I would not want to have people sign up for this yet.
Okay.
Let's assign those who aren't here.
I, I, you know, I'm not used to being the lone naysayer, but I don't like this idea. Because I think policy is, is the most important thing that we do, as a committee, and I think that, that everything that we bring with policy, those are, those are the really valuable, meaningful conversations we have here. When we come and we kick around policy, and we all do it together, and in, from formation. And, and then I think when we don't have a policy that we're on the same page on, we delay it, we push it back, and we, or we revise it, I think that's a very important process for every voice to be in. My concern would be that, that too small of a group has one perspective on policies, and, and that's not what we want, that's the reason we have a whole committee, there's very few things that we do as a committee that are meaningful, and policy is, is very high impact, so, I think every policy should come to the whole committee.
Thank you.
From its origin.
Linda?
Just quickly, I didn't hear that it wouldn't come to us. I heard there would be a review of the policy, and then it would
That's right.
Come to us finally for that discussion, so.
But this is new policy as well, you're saying?
Typically, no, we're looking at, we, right now, I don't have new policies, revisions, we have lots of policies coming up, and it, it, it takes a lot of time to pull a lot of people together, and I'll get, an example would be, for example, the behavior codes, they're insurmountable, and actually, I still think there's much work to be done, even if it comes to school committee for the next year in August, which is why I've asked the principals to continue to bring it to school improvement teams, so parents and their, that members can get, get it better and better every time, but there, um, there's a lot of policies that have to be revised that are older, so, um, it would just take, it takes more time, I'm happy to do it either way, I know a lot of school committees do it this way, and I, I, I thought we'd recommend it.
I, I think, you know, it just, I don't want us to become a rubber stamp board, you know, I think from the very beginning in these policies, we need to be in the conversations. And, and I value those, and I, I think it's, it's the most important thing we do. That's what we're here for.
It is, I agree, absolutely.
What we're here for.
And, and it wasn't to diminish the importance, it was.
No. Second.
We have a.
That's already a motion.
I don't think we do.
There was.
Yeah, Craig.
I said, so who?
Craig did, I.
Okay, you said.
Isn't a motion to table Trump?
Trump is, I think that's Trump.
You can't table a motion that's not on the table. I think you can, for seeing. I think the motion to table trumps the.
Trumps everything else. Okay. Seconded by Dave, so we're, we're putting this.
I think Gary added a comma.
No comment.
No, no, comma.
No, a comma.
Oh, comma.
Sorry.
Okay, so there's been a motion to table this subcommittee work. Creation of a subcommittee, so those in favor to table it at a later date? Donna had her hand up, there's no more discussion, Donna, sorry.
No more discussion, Donna.
Those against? And those abstaining?
Lisa's voting against, though.
Against? Okay. Lisa's on. I do think.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm making a motion to pull A1 and A2.
And any other polls for anybody? Mr. Day?
I just have a question on H2.
Okay, so we'll pull it? Okay, yeah, we need to pull it, we're going to have a question or discussion. I'm sorry. Oh, he can? Okay, thank you. Mr. Day, I stand corrected by, we have a discussion, but you can ask a clarifying question. Okay. Okay, so. So, right now, we're pulling A1 and 2, because they're minutes. Okay.
I know that. Such great notes, it doesn't, I, I always trust you.
So, to clarify, do we let Mr. Day have his clarifying question, and question first? Go for it, Mr. Day. I'm learning something new every day. Go ahead, sir. Yeah, please, ask your clarifying question.
The reasoning behind this, it states, a Richmond building inspector noted that the equipment is in our authority. This is a, a, a boiler in, in the town of Hopington, I'm, I'm just a little confused as to how the Richmond building inspector gets, gets involved in this.
Thank you, Mr. Day.
Sure, what we had done was, in preparation for the emergency approval by RIDE, we had an authority, having jurisdiction, take a look at all the equipment that was in that, most of it was on the campus, but we also had the Ashway Boiler that was of concern. We had the notation from the vendor that services it, we also wanted a building inspector to take a look and include that in our list to ride before they made a decision. What was, it was, it was relative to the competence of saying the condition of the equipment.
Okay.
Mr. Day, dessert.
So, is that it?
Yes.
Madam Chair, make a motion to move the remainder, but before I do, I'd like to recognize K donations, a donation from Julia Beasley of Charleston Wood Island of table centerpieces for the senior prom.
Is there my motion and second? Those in favor? Are you unanimous? Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve A1 executive session minutes of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Approval of executive session minutes of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, minutes not sealed.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the executive session minutes of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Approval of executive session minutes of May twenty-fifth, twenty-one, minutes not sealed, any discussion on the minutes? Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? And Mr. Mr. Abbott is abstaining. Thank you.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve A2 regular session minutes of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the regular session minutes of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Both of those were twenty-second, not twenty-first of June, right? Just like to clarify.
Yes. June twenty-second?
Yeah.
Oh, do we need to think? Okay, thank you for pointing that out, sir. Okay, so, we've been a motion and a second to approve the regular session minutes of June twenty-second. Yeah, go ahead.
Both of them?
No, I'll just clarify in the notes that they were read twenty, but it should be the twenty-sixth.
So, there's a motion, and there was a, a motion and a second to approve the regular session minutes of June twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Any discussion on that? Those in favor? Aye. Here. Abstaining, Mr.? Okay, we're on to reports.
At this time, there are no subcommittee reports. My only report for the evening is the update on K registrations. Currently at Ashway, we are at thirty-two, at Charlestown, we are at fifty-nine, and preparing to open up a third kindergarten classroom, we have a conversation starting with this for next week. Hope Valley's twenty-one, and Richmond's sixty-five, for a total of a hundred and seventy-seven kindergartens, I just want to remind the committee that in previous review of the way registrations work, you typically see a larger bump as we get even closer to school openings, so. We're on the rise.
You know, do you remember reading the numbers? I was.
I don't mind. Ashway, thirty-two, Charlestown, fifty-nine, Hope Valley, twenty-one, Richmond, sixty-five.
And there's no upcoming events, so the next is the school committee request, the school committee requests for future agenda items, Mr. Luzon.
Oh, yes, I have a request that's been, I've told, it's going to be probably honored this fall, early fall, for transportation. At that time, could we also invite our elected officials? If possible, state senators, state reps?
Mr. Day, and then Mr. Liboree.
Yes, before we get these school safety on our approval for the agenda, I'd like to, like to have a copy of all of the the drills, and who attended them, and stuff like that, I have some serious questions as to whether I can sign off on these with the information. And the other thing that I, I, I don't need is maybe just an explanation. When I look at this bullying report, which is required by policy and state law, the Charahoe High School and the Career Tech Center are combined, this gives me no information as to what's building. If, you know, did some of these, this bullying occur in the, in the both tech building? It, you know, this, this, this information is, is not correct, it's not something I can get my hands around to know that, that this bullying, when you combine that, when you combine these things with, with the career and, and tech center and the high school, that, that's not, that's not accurate information when you say it's combined, because I don't know which build, these are two separate buildings, these are two separate facilities, and they need to be treated that way, and we thought. So, I, I, I don't need a, an agenda item.
So, so you would like a report on that, Mr. Day?
I would like to know.
Yeah, how it's done, and, okay.
If we got ten, that five of them were
Sure.
physically in the high school, and five of them were physically in the, in the current tech building. Somebody should have that information.
Yeah, I would like to recommend an agenda item on onboarding new members of the school committee for the future, so there's no real urgency for that.
Do, do you guys understand when Mr. Liboree, just sort of like when we have new school committee members sort of go through the protocol?
Some kind of an orientation, onboarding to the process. Policies, protocols, et cetera.
Is that it?
I think that's it.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair?
Thank you very much, yes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Favor of adjourn?
Yes.
Yeah, I know. If Ryan was here, we would not have gone past ten.
Adjournment? Thank you.
I don't know if I believe in this, Luzon.
Thank you, everyone, thank you very much. Bold, robust. Yes, exactly what you call it, okay. You know what?